We're rolling. Okay, I'd like to call to order the Town of Coventry Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is now six thirty-five. Uh, death determination of court. Mister Kenny.
Here.
Mister Smith.
Here.
Mister Ray.
Yeah.
Mister Burke.
Yeah.
Mister Price.
Yeah.
Mister Studley's excused tonight. Secretary Anderson.
Here.
Vice Chair Kalunian.
Here.
Chairman Flynn is here. We have a quorum of eight. Okay, what could we, uh, evacuation plan? Doja came out to the left. We'll take you out in the back of the building. Uh, if we could still stand for a pledge of leaving. Before I start, like apologize, we're all crammed in tonight. They're renovating the council chambers so that we're gonna just make, make it work tonight. Thanks, everybody. Okay, first on the agenda is four point one, November twenty, twenty-four, special meeting. There's a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Close it. Well, second to motion.
I have a motion by Mister Smith, second by Mister Price. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we also have the regular meeting, November twentieth. I'll entertain a motion for that.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, November twenty.
I have a motion by Mister Smith. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mister Kenny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have. Approval of calendar. Does anybody have any issues with the calendar that was in the packet?
Glad it's not on my birthday, Mary.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
A motion by Mister Kenny. I have a second by Mister Ray. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, six point one, we have a public hearing. Proposed nine thousand square foot industrial building, master plan, major land development with associated dimensional variances. Owner applicant BJK Realty LLC, AP sixty lot twelve zone industrial I one. Six, the address is sixteen hundred Flat River Road. Applicant is seeking to conduct a nine thousand square foot industrial building in the southeastern corner of the lot, which is associated with parking and landscaping. The applicant is seeking zoning variance for the number of loading spaces, minimum distance to residential structures and minimal landscape buffers. Therefore will be heard as unified development, which means we are acting as the zoning also tonight, so we'll need two motions. We'll need one on the dimensional variance and one on the development itself. Is anybody here representing the applicant?
Hi.
Anywhere you wanna be, but if you're comfortable, you may. And, um, is there a way, Mary, you more comfortable at the table or you more comfortable?
We have a plan.
Yeah.
If we have a chair there.
We can put the, uh, that physical plan back up for you.
Uh, yeah, that's what we're gonna testify to that.
Yep.
We have a. We have a chair there also for you if you wanna. Put your stuff on the chair. Totally up to you.
Well, hopefully, um.
Yeah.
That way everybody can see.
We can put it on the screen, but I think they, they might. Mary, do you know we can put that on the screen for you if you'd like?
Oh, whatever. Yeah, would that be easy for you to put on the screen? Um, yeah, John, let's do that, Sam.
Exactly right. I gotta listen to my staff right away.
This fall we're here.
Didn't have to go there.
It's all in GoDoma.
There you go. I'm gonna pull up your plans. Now, this is really gonna test our internet connection. And that's a busy plan. But there it is.
Oh, good, great.
All right, I can probably get you down to a scale that makes more sense. And let me get to the sheet. What, does there a certain sheet you guys are looking for?
I do. Um, it's a sheet for.
Well, all right. This, uh, that looks. And this is it?
Yeah.
All right, let me get yours zoomed to extent where it needs to be. No, how many?
It might be under the.
Does that look good for you? Framing you up pretty well there?
Yep.
All right. Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, um, members of the board. My name is Mary Chaparchi. My law office is located at fifty-one Jefferson Boulevard, Fourth Ward in Rowan. I represent the applicant and owner of the, uh, proposal before you this evening. Uh, with me this evening are, uh, the co-managing members of BJK Realty LLC, who is the owner and applicant. Um, I don't plan to call them as witnesses, but they are available in the term of questions. Uh, in addition, um, John, Jonathan Hampton, who is a professional engineer, is from Coventry Survey Company. He is the site, uh, a professional engineer, and he is the site designer of proposal before you this evening. Uh, this proposal came, um, came before you this evening, um, because we're seeking a, the applicant is seeking to propose a nine thousand square foot building. The building will be used in general warehousing storage. Um, this is an allowable use by right under the zoning code, section nine point one, table of uses. The owner of the property, uh, is, uh, conducts a business in the front of the property, so I'd shake lot, and John will explain that detail better. Um, but they are in, uh, they have an industrial business. Um, we've been there for well over ten years. Um, and, um, they really have a need for some storage. Um, so that was one of the reasons that they looked into this. In addition, they work with a lot of vendors, um, m- members in the trade who also needed some type of storage for businesses. For, for example, we like for, uh, a plumber who, uh, has some materials, maybe, uh, one of himself or herself with one or two employees or alone, has a place to store the equipment, go do their day job overnight. In addition, the building. And on the west side, which is our neighboring abutting property, that, uh, one of those, um, um, owners or, or tenants that has a business that is seasonal, and they also needed some storage, some of their equipment. Um, so it seems like a good fit of need that was required, and that was really the infancy of, of why they wanted to do this. When we looked at the site, um, this was really, uh, and again, John will better explain it, but this was really the best area because their, uh, business is, is conducting some parking and some of their business in the front portion, uh, closer to the road is being utilized, and it would be really quite dangerous to have car, you know, a more, more, move their, uh, workers to the back. It just wouldn't, wouldn't be feasible to conduct business in a safe manner. And we also have an easement, which is there. John will again explain that better, but, um, obviously we have to stay out of that easement and have proper clearances for it. Um, so that is the reason for it. We have, um, as you know, as, as noted earlier, what the required variants that we're seeking essentially come from the right side. That is what, that's the east side of the property, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, which is residential.
The west, the west is up.
Okay, west is up. Okay, so I apologize. Let me correct. That is where our, so on the east side, then I'm correct, is basically where we're seeking, excuse me, um, uh, the variances for because of the, um, the distance to the residential area. So I just wanted to note that we reached out to all of those neighbors who are butters. Um, and all of them have provided, in the, uh, we submitted that with the application, letters of support, we met with them, explained to them the project. Um, it is, uh, our opinion, this is gonna be a better buffer. Right now, uh, there was a lot of debris there, a lot of garbage that has, we, uh, our, um, owners, the applicant has had to maintain. We think it'll be cleaner and provide better protection for, um, the neighbors. Uh, in addition, the, we've constructed or designed the building, so the back of the building will, uh, face the, the residential area. There'll be no activity there. We'll have lighting plan up to code that won't disturb the neighbors, um, and, and, and really make it a, a better buffer for them. So, uh, again, John will further explain that. So if you don't mind, oh, one last thing. I just wanted to say that we also looked at the, uh, recommendations by staff that had some conditions, and those are obviously all, um, acceptable to the applicant. With that, I'd like to have John testify.
Good evening, board. Not normally, but we are zoning.
I'm zoning.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, do you wanna do it, David?
Sure.
Do you sound, will swear to give the testimony for this board with the truth? Yes. Thank you, Dave.
John, could you state your name, place of employment?
Sure, my name's John Hampton. Um, Coventry Survey is my place of employment.
And how long have you been, um, a professional engineer?
I've had my stamp since seventeen, so that would be seven years.
Yes, okay. And, uh, you, um, had testified before this planning board before, correct? And, um, you have done similar designs like this throughout the state of Rhode Island?
Yes.
In some here in Coventry?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and you are familiar with this area?
Yes.
And you're also familiar with the zoning code subdivision regulations and comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
That apply to the site?
Yes.
Okay. And can you just briefly explain again? I kind of went over it, but in better detail, just the sum of the site conditions and, uh, the proposal before the board?
Sure. We're trying to do like a kind of commercial storage area. Um, we're trying to provide parking there, so we have the parking on the front. Um, we're trying to still maintain access, so this easement is for the access of that buttery property. That partying property does not have any roadway access. It doesn't have any frontage, so this easement is their only egress and exit for that property. Um, actually, if you wanna do, uh, another thing that we had to consider too is for fire and then tractor trailer trucks, a lot of that um, area that's received up on the top there from the abutting property has trucks and trailer trucks.
It's on the west side, correct?
Uh, that would be the.
A budding neighbor?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yep. Um, actually Doug, if you can, could you go to, um, so keep going down. So, uh, one of our things, keep going. Yeah, so we, we done circular analysis for both the tractor trailers and the town fire truck. And we found that if we push that building more to the north, we're gonna have issues with circulation with both the tractor trailers and the fire truck. Um, again, we're trying to put a buffer. Um, the trees that we planted are, are what are called green giants. They're very large. They, they fill up and they bring a very good screening.
Okay. Um, and, uh, you have your septic approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then you applied to DM for stormwater at this juncture?
We submitted to EM, DM came back and said that our project does not meet the criteria for stormwater approval.
Mm-hmm.
So it, it doesn't meet the criteria that they've set. Is it less than an acre of disturbance? Less than an acre of disturbance, correct.
Okay. Can you just explain, John, a little bit about, um, just the, the design of the building, this location, and what's going on like down the fresh? That, that area.
This area here?
Yeah, just so what?
Sure.
Explain it.
So we have parking out in front and then towards the north side of the building here. This is the septic system.
Okay.
Um, in the back, we have, uh, fire access and then propane tanks for each individual unit. And we have fire access and then on the southern side of the buildings where our water quality is.
And you won't have any, um, driveway access, um, in the back of the building?
No, that is just for emergency access only.
Okay.
There's no, gonna be no activity in the back. It's just going to be, um, just, you know, emergency access only.
Okay. And on the south side, which is, um, facing property that's owned by the town that way?
Yeah.
Uh, can you just explain what, what is going on there?
Sure.
And what kind of access to the buildings on that side?
Um, so this is just gonna be emergency access on the southern side of the building. All the access to the building is gonna be, which should be on the upper side where the, where the parking is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're gonna have dumpsters, and again, that's gonna be located away from the residential area, more towards the interior of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
Away from the streets.
And you, and, and, and those are, those are additional plantings you're carrying around, correct?
Correct. So it was one of the requirements from the TRC meeting that we had. They requested that we put additional plantings in the front to kind of screen. There's a bike path behind the property, so we're trying to screen that bike path a little better.
Mm-hmm. Is that fenced there as well at, at, uh?
I don't, there's a fence for the dumpster, because that's one of your requirements, but it doesn't go over the whole.
And that, and that's the dumpsters, is that little area on the south side?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and in your opinion, um, is granting of these variants, will it alter the general character of this surrounding area?
No, this is, this whole area is industrial. It's all commercial, the ones to northwest are seascape. You know, it's all commercial stores. This is what exactly is in that area, correct?
And you've taken, uh, what you haven't taken what you believe will be adequate precaution on these, uh, east side, sort of the residential area?
Yes, we've tried to screen that as best we can. We've done double plantings. We've staggered them just to do that. We're trying to keep as much as the existing planting as we can feasibly.
In your opinion, is that better of what's proposed better in that area than what is currently there?
Yes, it is.
And what is that?
Because currently there's not, um, it's very sparse. There's, there's garbage there, you know, um, so this is definitely clean it up and provide better.
And is the hardship that the applicant faces due to the general character of the site?
Yes, it's due to the general characteristics of the site and that because we have this existing lot that locked in on the top. We can't, we have to provide access to them, and we have to provide, make sure they have safety access with their fire trucks and with their tractor trailer. So this, this is providing that access.
Um, and that the hardship is not the result when part of action of the applicant?
No.
And why is that?
Because this is an existing lot that was subdivided and you still have that access.
Okay. And, um, and is, in your opinion, is this compliant with all the zoning required, uh, standards, variant standards in the town's codes?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, you have also reviewed the, you said earlier, the subdivision regulations. Um, in your opinion, does this meet, um, the subdivision standards for major land development?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And you, uh, does it have any environmental negative impacts?
No.
Okay. And actually, I have nothing further to say with this, and I'll be open to questions.
Just wanna ask this, but do you have their name and address and everything that you need?
Yes, I do.
You're welcome.
Uh, it is a public hearing. I just have a couple of things. One, I'm glad you reached out to the neighbors.
Yeah, thank you.
We, we really encourage that. I'm glad they're all happy about that. Am I all the other concern with the buffer?
Mm-hmm.
The green giant arborvitae, so they'll grow four foot a year, so they'll be twelve foot next year.
Yeah.
And the, the double planting or the staggered planting, gonna give you a much better buffer for screening and for noise.
Yep.
But with the back of the building, towards the properties of the neighbors, that's actually the best buffer.
Correct.
So that's really all I have to say. Is anybody else on the board have any comments? Go ahead, Mr. President.
Yes, I'd like to. But, but John, could you go back to the first? Yeah, I'll go. You want the top slide there? Yeah, top one shows the streets. Uh, that one? Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. So John, on, um, the end of Leader Street and the end of Second Street, I see you've got some detail, both of them, Second Street is, is to the south. There's drainage, uh, drywells at the end of both of those roads, and those houses in that neighborhood do suffer with a very high water table. They get water in their basements. So are you familiar with the drainage that's at the end of both those roads? The drywells on both of them? Yeah. Okay. So our drainage is not directly expected more towards the bike path. Okay, yeah, so it goes under the bike path. So are you doing anything for the drainage that's at the end of the road to help with it? Well, well, so we designed the drainage just to. For your site, but they're, they're at the very end of the road. It may even be close to that property line. Okay. If you find them, there's a drywell on the end of each. We can look into that. Okay. Um, they're kind of under the brush. They're back about ten feet off the end of the road. The drywells. And they get those houses at the end of, um, what's number sixty-three, if I can see it, and the other one on the right. They do get a lot of water in the basement, in the screen. Just an F line. Yeah. Thank you. That's it, Ron.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mister Price.
Um, is that a small retaining wall that you have on the west east side and south side of the property?
No, that is, that is where we're gonna put our origin control. So that's where that, that symbol moves. Okay.
I'll say, anybody else? I'm gonna go right down. Rick, you're next.
Um, are, are the properties pretty much at grade right now? In other words, the yards of the properties on Second Street at, at uh, similar grade or elevation to, um, the property that's.
Yes, it's very, very flat, and there's probably one to two percent slopes.
Okay, so what I didn't see a building facade and, and to be quite candid, I know the arborvitae's are gonna grow, but that building's twenty-eight feet tall. And that's the back of the building or the peak?
That is the peak of the building.
The peak. So what would the back wall be?
So if you wanna scroll down, actually have that in the so.
Keep going.
Nope, almost.
See it?
Yeah. This one. So this is what is gonna be planted like? So this is what they wanna planting, and this, if you go down to the next one, this is what the overall will be.
Right.
As, as.
Yeah, I, I wasn't as concerned by it. It's just, the, the real issue that's here is, is the variance, which is the distance between the houses itself and the building.
Correct.
And the, and the building and the property.
True.
And I, I did notice that there are some constraints with the lot. Assuming you have to absolutely build a, a building that's fifty feet wide and a hundred and eighty feet long.
Yeah.
I mean, a smaller building facing a different direction, if perhaps even if the building was reversed and the parking was on the opposite side and the building was back, back at the easement line, um,
So.
it would work. And, and go ahead, you can respond to that, but those, those were kind of my concerns. It's like, what alternatives were available? It's not like this is an existing lot of record, and that's the only building envelope. There's already a building on that lot. This is, this is an auxiliary building that's being put there primarily, um, to provide storage for the existing business as well as other invitees for investment.
Correct.
And I'm just trying to figure out why this qualifies as a, a hardship.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and not something that's being done, let's say, for profit. And then if you wanna respond to that, just, I just had one other concern. If you could go back to the uh, the plan with the, with the, the fire truck and the, uh, and the turning radiuses. What arrangements are being made so that, um, your visitors and trucks and, and fire app, the fire apparatus does not have to, uh, encroach on the abutting property?
Oh, yeah, well, I said you can talk if you want.
Okay.
But I can answer that question for you. Uh, we actually gonna, uh, we have, uh, an agreement with an easement for that, so that's why, so we're not gonna encroach on the neighbor.
So you have an agreement with KGS Realty LLC or their?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're fine with that as well. It's gonna be a cross easement for emergency laps and turnaround.
It wasn't shown, so I just figured.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Yes, we can control both property.
He has, but we wanted to do that because, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't with the app.
Mm-hmm.
So the applicant controls the other property is currently.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. The, the applicant can speak if they have other plans to move them to other control, but at this point, the applicant controls the property.
So that further adds to my question. And why is there a hardship that the building has to be placed that close to an eastern property?
I can probably answer that. Um, the, the easement is necessary for the, for the, regardless of who owns the property on the west side to access that. And, and, and that, they're industrial, and this is own industrial, so they have, do have big trucks coming in and they need the turnaround advice. So you need the easement. Um, this building, um, is not gonna work less than fifty feet wide. We've looked at that. The nature of, of to put vehicles in to do the deliveries and storage won't work. So, so the building has to be fifty. So the reason it wasn't turned around is because we were trying to maintain as the least amount of disturbance necessary to that side of the property, uh, to the residents. So we came up with something that would be the least amount of disturbance. And baseball, solar plants, they all, they, you know, know what it's gonna look like, um, and we all had support. They were happy. And as long as, in, in fact, it was one of the neighbors, uh, had suggested or, or said that she definitely wants to make sure the plantings are gonna be there because it was spots and they presented that. Uh, so that was the reasoning for it. It just made sense because you need the cross easements for, for trucks and the nature of getting, you know. John can expand on that?
Yeah, also, the, a lot of the noise is just from trucks being dropped off and added in. So reverse that, the, the noisy trucks are gonna be pointing towards the resident.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So, so overall, just because, I'm sorry, I did look at this, this was on our agenda, it's back, and I spent a little bit more time, but what is the actual distance in the end between um, that building and the house next door?
We had on a plane, I believe it's seventy-seven feet. Yeah.
Yes, seventy-seven.
Instead of a hundred.
Seventy-seven instead of a hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Not that.
Okay, so you were only asking really for twenty-three feet of relief from the, from the butter there and, and it's, what was it?
One hundred.
One hundred.
No.
Right, right, but then I was gonna ask for the property line, but because.
The, the, the building isn't in the setback. The other section of relief is that they're not providing the total buffer distance, which is a landscape buffer area. I believe they would owe us fifty feet.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you needed enough for fire access.
There isn't fifty feet of landscape buffer there now. Um, and I think that what they're doing is providing a specific planted buffer in a shorter width to try to accommodate the existing conditions and the fact that they wanna put a building there.
Has anything changed since this, we, we got this report a couple of weeks back. Has anything changed? Sometimes we get updates.
The, um, on this one, the applicant, uh, continued at the last meeting, uh, based on a recommendation by staff because at that point, we didn't have written justification for the zoning variances. The applicant has since given us written justification of zoning variances last week. Staff feels satisfied with what they gave us, so then, uh, based upon that, we had a positive recommendation on the project. So the key thing that changed to this, I think the applicant put a really good, honest effort into their zoning narrative. They addressed each of the state standards. I thought they did a pretty good job of that. The plan itself didn't change. It was really the applicant providing the, the point-to-point justification for it.
That's the that was the two-page memo that we, that I think I was just looking, yeah, looking for here. So the justifications here, so if, if this was to move forward, um, in addition to the staff report, we would have to also include that as, as justification, because clearly the opinion of the staff report, um, is different from what I'm hearing right now.
The, uh, staff report is a positive recommendation on this. Um, so the.
But there were concerns about not having adequate justification for the zoning barrier.
So that they provided, in my opinion, a zoning narrative. It's a two-page document
I saw.
uh, a week ago today.
That's it. Okay, I just read that.
We feel that that document does what staff was looking for, was this, it takes the plan, which has not changed, and I think it is a good plan. Um, and it ties the specific standards, uh, of the state and, uh, and demonstrates that they've met those standards. Um.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And why I brought it up? Thank you.
Yep. And then just keep in mind, where we're at right now, this is a master plan, so we will see this project again at preliminary plan. Although it does not sound as though they're, they're gonna have a really heavy-handed stormwater design.
No.
Um, but they will have more details, a lighting plan, a few other pieces of information at preliminary plan. You're good, Rick?
By May, I think.
No, no, I was looking for, is there a date on here or anything?
No.
Yeah, that is it. That, it was, uh, I think it was December.
This was submitted December eleventh? Hang on a sec. What was Wednesday a week ago? Yeah, December eleventh.
Explain that. Um, there was some confusion on our end as to who was doing it, and, um, I then got noticed from, um, I realized it had, hadn't been addressed. There was some request for it. Uh, someone from, was covering for John while he was away in his office, and then I didn't get the same email, so, yeah, we apologize for that, but when I did get notification that I was gonna be assisting with writing that, um, I got a, I got an email that was due, it's, I knew it was due, but then they said, oh, sorry, we forgot to tell you to do it twelve, and I was, uh, unavailable to, at my computer. So that is why we continued it. Um, unfortunately, it's just a timing issue, and then we, we better than last year.
Problem. Just wanted to make sure we had all the facts before this comes to.
Yep, I just wanted to give you some reason for that.
You good, Rick?
Yep.
Fine.
Yep, just trying to get my, uh, my barons, the, John, the, um, there's a god rail at Second Street, yeah, right, uh, is that god rail on your property or is that a town god rail? I, I was over there earlier.
Not a god rail.
It's just, it looked like a god.
It looks like a god rail. It's, it's our, ours, our thing for like, like straw walls and straw, straw hay bale. It's just for erosion.
But that is on your property.
Yes.
Right?
And, yeah, it's not like. Leave, so, yes.
Have to be.
I was just trying to get my bearings, that's all.
Yeah. There, there is another, uh, feature shown on there. Feature shown on there and I think that might be what you're talking about, see little points that come down on the south side of the erosion, yeah. Is there something else there that goes all the way to the back of the back of uh? That lot, house number four on Second Street.
So that, so that was our our LOD line, so that's where we're going to be disturbing.
Yeah, I was just trying to get my.
Oh, yeah, okay, I see it on the top.
I see where the where the street end.
That's fine.
Where the street ended. Cause I I mean, I had the hangup of the uh, you know, the the ten foot, you know, variation, as opposed to the fifth for the buffer, but it'll take just.
Four, just second.
The Second Street.
Mm-hmm.
East side. But seeing what's there now, you are definitely improving on it, and then I have a concern with the twenty eight foot. Uh, roof line, but it's not like it's in the site of, you know, blocking any beautiful view of everything, you know, so.
Street view.
That'll work for sure.
A street view in this area, but we're talking about that area right now, I can't get a person on the street, but if it's as close as we're gonna get.
And I guess, Bob, yeah, yeah, I'm satisfied, but I, uh, it's definitely an improvement what you proposed to the buffer, definitely an improvement for what's there. Um, I'm on both sides, the so- south and the and the east, and I do appreciate your, you know, like.
We're we're trying to pick the the green giants as as we try.
Yeah, sure, and I appreciate your chair's comments that you did reach out to the abudis, cause you know, we're tight town and.
Oh, sure.
I just, you know, I also asked that, you know, in good faith that. After it's erected, if there's some minor details, lighting or something that you can.
We're actually uh, required to work uh, to uh, submit a a writing plan for the proposed condition, but. Uh, you know, to meet the codes and you definitely do that in uh, in you, I think what they call.
Right.
Yeah, straight down, so they don't interfere with the neighbors at all, yeah, no, no, no uh, problem. Um, no, I, you know, the applicants live very close by as well and and you know, they're they're active. In this area, they're running their business up front, they're there every day, so they they know the neighbors and they have a good relationship, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Anybody else?
Uh, one question.
Go ahead.
What color is the building on there?
Um, is that determined?
I don't understand.
What?
Tan, it's not gonna be white, right? So it's gonna be tan, okay, yeah.
Advance the rest of the dollar during the party.
Okay. Good question.
Yeah.
His name for the.
Yeah, no, I just.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen.
One who responded.
Yeah, why don't we understand?
Yeah.
Thank you.
An address please.
You are, you are the um, member of BJK Realty. Okay, um, like you're the applicant slash on subject property.
Just like to see a follow that. What's your name, sir?
Ryan Grace, G R A C E.
Where the testimony gave to the board is the truth?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to see a call that blends into the environment, the area of the house. Looks like a really new project.
Yeah, it'll be a tan building and, yeah, thank you very much, yes, thank you, anybody else? How you all set with your presentation?
I am also with that presentation, uh, I would just request to, we have to come back the corner.
We have to open a public hearing.
Okay.
Um, the, to answer your question, yes, this was noticed only at master, you didn't request to combine.
Okay.
Hey, it is a public hearing, I'll entertain a motion to open up public hearing.
Make a motion, open it up.
Just have a motion by Mr. Ray, have a second by Mr. Kenny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion carries, anybody in the room would like to speak for or against this project?
Mm-hmm.
Not seeing anybody? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close.
A motion by Mr. Kenny? This is somebody?
No, this is, this is only a recording, there's no one, there's no one else.
Have a second by Mr. Ray, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. Is there any other further questions by the board on this project? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion first on the variant.
Three variant.
Three variants. Thank you.
Chair, I'll make the motion if you'll have it.
Yes.
Uh, this is regarding the gender five point one, I think you might have said six point one at the beginning.
Well, right, five point one.
I've got six point one.
No, six point one, that's the old agenda.
Okay, six point one, thank you. Uh, proposed is a nine thousand square foot industrial building, that's a project named, um. You know, the applicant, in this case, is uh, seeking for relief on some dimensional variances, uh, this is, this member does agree with the staff. Um, report, uh, in approval of this, of these three dimensional variances. Uh, I'd like to incorporate the findings of facts that's in the uh, staff report. Um, I'd also adopt. Um, the amended application that came in, I believe on December ele-.
December eleven.
Eleven, uh, as part of my motion. Just to reiterate, this I approved this uh, dimensional variance application with the condition that the applicant receive approval of its final. Plan, major land development application. Um, that's it.
Hey, I have a motion by Mr. Anderson, grab a second. I have a second by Mr. Smith, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on the three variants. Now I'll need a a a motion on the application itself.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll finish this out, I'll make a motion.
For the development.
For the development, and again, this is the same project name proposed nine thousand square foot industrial building, um, as we discussed. Uh, this is gonna go in the south, the uh, east corner of the lot, so it's dealing with parking and landscaping. Um, AP sixty lot twelve. Zone nine one, lot size is three point three six acres, sixteen hundred flat river road, so. After much discussion and this littered in front of us, I agree with the plan and staff report to. Will approve this massive uh, master plan. I'd like to adopt the findings of facts that are in the staff report, um, I'd also like to adopt the TRC report. Um, incorporate the the staff report as a whole in my motion.
Okay, very good, I have a motion, have a second, I'll second, I have a second by Mr. Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Good job, good job, yes.
Yeah. You don't need to, you don't need to write it until you're fever case, but I didn't hate it. It wasn't, yeah, when we write your decision, it's pretty much, most people would rather them on, but I, it doesn't partner, it doesn't partner.
It's like sleeve.
Um. All right, yeah, we've got a little more ring to operate.
Okay, we have another, another public hearing, London Reserve. Master plan, major land development would associate dimensional variances. Owner applicant Alpha Holdings LLC AP seven lot twenty five, AP eight lots two, three and nine, AP sixteen lot one thirty three and a portion of AP eight. Lot one, zona twenty residential, London Turnpike, the applicant proposes develop seventy five detached single family condominium units. With twenty percent of which would be proposed as deed restricted affordable housing, each unit would be roughly twenty five hundred square foot in size. And include an attached two car garage, the project includes pedestrian walkways, lighting, landscaping, visitor parking areas and other site amenities. The applicant is seeking zoning variance for proposed multiple single family dwelling units on the same lot and for dwelling unit density allowances and therefore will be heard as a. As a unified development, and again, this will be a double motion, it will be one on the variances and one on the project itself. Uh, is anybody here representing the applicant? Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm a member of Coventry, um, planning board for the record attorney Kay Joseph Contaci, representing the applicant this evening, I have Mr. Sam Garafalo with me. I'm Sam Hemingway from Garafalo, uh, I'd like to have sworn in as a witness, uh, because it is a unified case. Uh, and I have my principal here as well.
Okay, thank you, wanna swear him in there? Can you tell me where it's going to be for it?
I'm Hemingway, I'm an engineer with Garafalo, I'm a project team business.
The sheet you're looking for, Mr. Hemingway? This one, this this one looks like it's uh, where you're looking to be? Oh. Let's see when it loads, it looks like that's gonna be the one.
Yep.
Yeah. All right. It'll be uh. All right.
Good evening, members of the board, um, the applicant, application before this evening is a request for approval for seventy five units. Housing on this site, this is the second reiteration of this project, the original application was for ninety units. This is unique in this respect, I just will point out, but over here, this property. Borders on three communities, obviously it's in Coventry, that's why we're here tonight, this area down here is East Greenwich. And this area here is West Warwick. So we're we're at the corner in Coventry, the original proposal was for ninety units, we have reduced that amount to seventy five. We have put more of a buffer to the top of the um, site plan, uh, and residential neighborhood there. As was stated in the introduction, these are single family homes, two car garages. We are proposing, uh, working with the town, uh, to make twenty percent, which is fifteen units affordable. We hope that would help the town get closer to its affordability goals in terms of housing. Uh, you have any answering questions? Turn it over to, I wanna make a point before I turn over Mr. Hemingway to go over some of the technical aspects. This proposed exit, as we are requesting at the moment, is for emergency.
Try not to, yeah.
I'm sorry, my touchscreen. Okay, I'm sorry about that.
No, no, it's all right, we'll get you right back.
I won't touch it. This area here. That's the right area.
Yes.
Okay, would be emergency.
East Greenwich?
Yes, exit only.
That's Crumpin Road, correct.
Yes, it is cor- that is correct, East Greenwich. Um, is requesting it also to be emergency only, it's just town felt, uh, this board felt. That would have to be a full access, then East Greenwich would make us go through that entire, this entire process in that town as well. Um. We're proposing emergency access because we think the reduction of the units. And the current proposed entrance would be more than sufficient, that would be an emergency access, but obviously, this board makes its own decisions. So I just want you to understand that, but uh, if you do decide to make that a full entrance. Our request would be that, you know, subject to approval by East Greenwich, that's the law anyway, but we want them back in good faith, it'll be Greenwich. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hemingway.
Excuse me, there are many technical questions regarding site distances, drainage, water, sewer, uh, capabilities and capacity, thank you.
Again, Sam Hemingway, we've got all the associates. Uh, uh, and you just went to him again?
I did, okay, thank you.
Um, uh, trying to brief you, this uh, property, if you are not aware of it, was a former gravel pit, uh, located southeast uh, corner of the of the town. It is east of New London Turnpike and north of Compton Road. Uh, again, it has a a history of activity on the property, it is owned or planted, but uh, has been operated again. Although it's dormant now, was operated with a commercial operation quite some time. Uh, there is a a significant entrance into the property, so a paved entrance road going into the property. Uh, that was the primary gated entrance, as well as an existing paved secondary access to New London Turnpike. Uh, there were provisions for a secondary entrance as well, those are not currently in place. Uh, there are a couple of uh, right away extensions to the property, one from the north, one from the south. Uh, with the anticipation that it might someday be developed as residential property. Uh, but the both the existing conditions and the activities on the property have made it so the connection to all of those would be physically very difficult. Uh, so we've identified, uh, realistically to, the the we're intending on utilizing the main entrance that is currently. On the site now, so if you were to drive by the property and see the existing entrance, that's that's the location we're proposing of the the new entry. Uh, the the secondary entrances uh, are provided again as as emergency access in areas that we feel like there are both. Egress uh, properties available for egress and grades that are are allowable to the development program, so. Um. We are proposing a single primary entrance to the property with seventy five units. Um, we have initiated some initial engineering activities, we are uh, before you with uh, a master plan. Really to talk about the overall layout, the the type of development project, the density at which we're coming in. And some of the early um, issues that have been uncovered, so uh, we have initiated uh, some uh, traffic investigations. Uh, we we, um, but we we regenerate its counts associated with this development and don't foresee significant problems at all. The issue that was raised, uh, and uh, by staff initially and by, I think was presented to this board at pre-application. Was one of of changes in traffic patterns in the town overall, and to ensure that in forty years, so. Those uh, those investigations are ongoing, we're currently looking at other areas of development activity. Uh, and tying those to the activities that we're pro- we're proposing, uh, but certainly what we've uncovered so far, the single entrance. Uh, should not have any trouble functioning at a at a level service that is suitable towards this size of development. Uh, we always support secondary egresses, so um, you know, we we a a a full egress of of full and uh, access. In a second location, would would certainly be encouraged, but we're, but the project is affected functions, I just find it with one entrance, I'm gonna be long. Uh, we have off similarly uh, begun the process of looking into public utilities, uh, so there is existing water service. Immediately adjacent to the property, in fact, there was a twelve inch water main extended this property again with the in the anticipation that. On completion of the of the pouring and gravel extraction activities, that development would occur in the future. So uh, that that has been extended, we obtained a letter and submitted those to the uh, town, a letter from town, you know, that that water service is available. The process to get specifics nailed down on that, uh, some of some, as we move forward. Uh, sewer similarly is available within the London, so along the front of the property. Uh, we reached to the town engineer to talk about the best that gets done. Uh, again, because of the 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 activity in that corridor, uh, the town has indicated that additional investigation is ongoing. Sort of nail down exactly what is required, uh, but generally speaking, there is certainly sewer service available and the and the portions of the property that identified to be within. Sewer service areas, uh, the details, the specific engineering details of getting connection to that. Uh, uh, need to be worked out and will be during the preliminary process. Uh, the 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 property, because of its dormancy, has uh, is now uh, showing signs of of wetland. Uh, on the property, most of those areas are manmade, so that the the rock excavation and gravel excavation was done to uh, below groundwater level. Uh, but as a as late dormant for, I mean, some odd years, we fucking like it. Uh, uh, there's been a lot of growth, there were a a few small pockets of naturally occurring wetlands anyway. Uh, we have submitted to the department and has gotten uh, uh, the current on the edge, uh, there is uh. A a long uh, process ahead of us in regards to getting the permit for actually doing improvements. Uh, that's related both to our final drainage design, which is still in front of us. Uh, but also, so the the extent of imperious area and if this next dispersed decision, this first step that we're taking now is gonna be important in identifying the full range. Uh, uh, improvements that we propose, that will be submitted to the department, we'll hear an approval, uh, but again. Because of the history of the project, we are are fully confident that we, the activities that were shown on the drawing, uh, with with. Little modification, a formidable route of department, uh, we we do expect. Uh, restoration activities to occur in regulated areas. So uh, our intent is to maintain this project through a wetlands permit, uh, rather than an application of alter wetlands. Uh, we have had an initial meeting and have requested a second meeting with the department to get clarification on what exactly that means. For the restoration activities, uh, again, if the board has had enough funding to go out there or play other members, but. A a lot of those regulated wetlands have significant amount of debris, either construction, or rock. Either construction debris or rock debris or construction materials within a wetland set, we would like to remove. All of those activities are regulated at state, so uh we'll be working through that process moving forward. Again, in ten thousand foot level, roughly forty-five hundred linear feet of road is proposed. We are proposing twenty-four foot wide roads with a sidewalk on a single side. We uh presented that information. Both to this board and the staff, uh we we received some initial input from the TRC. Uh indicating some specifics about that, but general concurrence with that approach. Uh so we, it's like the the board similarly agrees with with that and staff recommendations. Uh those are the sections that we'll be proposing uh more in order.
Thank you, Sandy, uh only other thing I'd like to to say, as we all know, we're at the. Uh master plan level, which is the very first public hearing, and there's a lot more engineering work, a lot more regulatory work to do. And the. Law requires us to come here, because they wanna have a public hearing, so everyone understands what we're proposing. This would be the top of the limit, that was, we go through the process through DEM and do engineering calculations. The project could change in a in a reduction vote, we cannot get any bigger after, after, if we're able to receive master plan. As everyone knows, the law requires us and the engineers will make us do zero net runoff. So whatever we propose, we must take care of on our own site. We cannot um. Rain into a neighboring property or into the wetlands. Wetlands are very heavily regulated. There's a long process to go through, um we're gonna go through it, but Mr. Hemingway has spent a considerable amount of time, my clients have spent a considerable money. Bringing a plan. In its second generation, we reduced from ninety to seventy-five, which we think is doable. And we're only asking for tonight is basically if this board felt comfortable with the overall general concept of seventy-five units. Um with twenty percent affordable, that we would continue during the path, there would be more notice, more. Opportunities for the staff, the board, the neighbors to comment on it and review it, and we would come back here with uh more detailed plans. But as you can see with the second generation, it's quite detailed, and there was a lot of effort. And a lot of expense that went into this, and there're gonna be continued more studies, more research and more review. By different agencies, mostly state agencies, but the town would be involved and perhaps also. The town of um East Greenwich as well, although quite frankly, we would hope to uh. Do something through East Greenwich. Uh if at all possible administratively, but it's unlikely to be honest with you. Uh I'd be happy at this point to answer any question, you have Mr. Hemingway, or the owners, I can have any of them sworn in, answer any questions. And also answer any questions from anything.
I I have a couple, uh one, do we have a bed count yet? A ba- bedroom colony. This would be the time to. Tell us, are there gonna be two bedrooms, three bedrooms, because you're gonna have a physical analysis on.
The final number, I I don't think a restrictive number has been assigned, so that the the intent is for a mixture of two to three bedrooms.
Okay, um also, you didn't address uh sidewalks on New London Turnpike. You'd like to see some sidewalks on London Turnpike, I would like to see going in the front of your property. Uh because that's gonna be a busy intersection, we have a lot of development, we have development across the street. I don't think you can go all the way up to Prompton with it, but if you can go up to the end of your property and then. Have a crosswalk, because we have sidewalks on the other side of the street going all the way up to Donald Road, Prompton Road. So I'd like to see sidewalks on. New London Turnpike.
There, I I I I agree, there is existing sidewalk along, uh I think it can force him. You know, I. We can certainly put down uh what we believe in appropriate, I. Thank you, I would agree, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Sidewalks for the grand found, or would they be like a kickcock burn, or doesn't really matter?
Yeah, go ahead, though.
This uh property represents uh a unique opportunity. This is, there is a sidewalk network on the London. Uh we're looking for connectivity to the existing sidewalk network, and uh this is where it ends. Uh this, I believe, is your main entrance to the property here. This, we'd like a continuation of the sidewalk, I mean, that that breaks apart and it gets a little loose right here, but we're looking for a continuation of the. Type of sidewalk network that exists in terms of the the curb. And the sidewalk, and I understand that while this piece of land here. Isn't, is only a portion of it, is part of this subject property, we do understand it's controlled by the applicant. And I think we'd be looking for sidewalk connectivity through this portion of land, which is represented on the lot or on the map from here. To here, we understand that there may be aspects of this where it may be difficult to get to Crompton Road, but we're looking for this. And I can only suggest that on the other side of New London, there are projects coming out. Uh on the opposite side in which we expect sidewalks, so we're looking for some sidewalk connectivity. Uh in the area, as a result of the developments on either side. Uh this of this roadway.
If if that were a stipulation or condition that the board put upon a a master plan, who we would obviously agree with.
Yeah, okay, and I think right now.
Would be affordable, uh would make a lot of sense.
We're at master, and you can get more information on that, I think we're trying to give you directions, so you come back to preliminary with a with a better idea of what you should have on the. Plan as as a as a first shot. The the details of how far we want that sidewalk to run and the extent of it, that can be an item of study, and we can discuss if we read up.
And the other thing I had, I'm gonna let my board uh vet it out, I think good planning tells me to connect the Crompton Road. But I mean, our our fire uh chief is comfortable with the fire gate, with the crash gate. So I mean, I don't think it'll be a a a deal breaker, but I might might wanna pursue it.
I understand, I will tell you, we can certainly uh go through the process with these.
But that's up to my board, I'm.
They're not as um. We know. Easy to work with.
We know.
As uh as Coventry is.
Yeah. But I think if, I'll let my board discuss that, I'm good, uh if anybody else have any questions.
Couple safety questions. I know this area, that's where I'm. Um but on the um a- access to East Greenwich. West Walk had access to East Greenwich for emergency access, and they shut it down later on. Uh with the plats, so they gotta go through ordinary drive to get the emergency, get all the way up to the back flats. So. West, well, East Greenwich, the East Greenwich itself shut it off, now it's a two pipes in the middle of the entrance and it's it's all overgrown. So that, there should be an extra entrance for the emergency, so please hopefully we get that with them settled, because that's what they do to West Warwick. Stop.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that if we go to East Branch and get an approval for an emergency exit, that they would have. If we don't get the approval, we can't go.
Yeah.
But if we get the approval, it's reported, they can't change their mind, they can't pose it.
And the second thing, the, on this side. I I've been there, there was a lot of loose dirt in the on the old days, I don't know how far they got back, haven't been there in years. But with a water, water. There's a lot of falling gravel still to the set. So we gotta get safety over there, and you put a wall up, something to protect that from falling when they when they start building houses, kids be running around there.
No, you you make an excellent point, and what I would tell you is we go half to rest that, but e- even whether you require us or not. My client's gonna be investing millions and millions of dollars in building these homes, they wanna make sure they're safe. People will buy them, and I'm making sure that they're safe, their families are safe, so that would be not a problem to make sure that whatever. The the stability of the gravel and the wall and and just the overall.
Yeah.
You know, terrain would be ab- absolutely uh safe.
Yeah, those are two of my questions, because of safety, I've been around here.
Very good. Anybody else? Go ahead, Mr. Friday.
So, um I see you have the the setbacks on the plants, I'd like to see what kind of uh planting you have in between. The adjacent property owners and the building, I'm not so worried along. Uh New London Turnpike, but uh I definitely have some. Concerns between uh the the new proposed properties and the existing residential housing. Make sure we have some buffers there.
We're open to whatever you or the board is. As far as the landscape buffer.
Yeah, I'm just saying, make sure you have something. And um um also, I'd like to see kind of some um. Uh some schematics of of the of the facade of the houses that.
Good, anybody else?
I do. Mr. Sakachi had mentioned about the drainage, and we understand this is just the master plan in the beginning of it, but just historically. On the north end of that property. Uh in two thousand ten, there were a lot of floods in two thousand ten, a lot of the water from that gravel operation did go north. And we had a lot of what, the town had a lot of water problems with those houses that bought it. The uh the northern part of that gravel operation, at that time, I believe it was Cardi that owned it. And um they did the best they could to try to retain it, but there was a huge waterfall for that neighborhood, so something to think of.
Yeah, so we were asked to. We are going to uh. Engineer and analyze that and submit it to DEM as well, and we certainly, as I said before, we can't train. If my clients go through, they own it, they own the headaches, they own what the property does, we can't overflow or drain it to any neighborhood property.
Just historically, it went that way.
So we're gonna spend substantial amounts of money to analyze it and to fix it or correct it or mitigate it or 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 do something.
Go ahead, Craig.
Um just a comment, I know this is just a general layout, but I don't see um place for mailboxes. Turnoffs for maybe guess what, parking. Perhaps it'll be in the interest, I know you'll squeeze it in, but. Um it's still an important fact that I'm, I guess you'll submit it preliminary. Um I wasn't quite grasping the sewer discussion, is it really? Uh leaning favorable, not favorable, and if you can't tie into sewer. Uh is it a total game changer, or is the soil suitable for onsite at least the free?
I can address that one for the board. Um this is an area where there is sewer, and this is a property that has uh an opportunity to connect sewer on New London Turnpike. Uh the issue is that we are anticipating a sewer study. Of the capacity of that line as it relates to all all the development in this area, keep in mind, that line is also fed by center of New England. Um at this point, because of the amount of units that we're seeking, not just on this proposal, but other proposals counting on that line, we're waiting. For that sewer study to be completed before we continue to serve, will serve letters. It's my opinion that we anticipate that sewer will eventually be made available to this this property. But we're in a position where we can't offer a will serve at this point in time.
My question was, if you can't issue a will serve. Is that a game changer for the project, or?
I'll answer that, the answer is yes. The what what that means is the the location, the number of units will all have to change, ISVS suitability studies. Will have to be done, ground testing will have to be done, I don't know if the uh project as presented would be feasible.
Okay.
So we have to study that, and we're wait, and actually, we don't have to, they study their own system, then they come back, and then we review their findings. So um if we don't have sewer, this will be a dramatically different project, or maybe no project at all.
Okay. And the other thing, I I did wanna touch on the access, and and I empathize with you, I remember West Warwick went ahead and didn't ask East Greenwich, and that's why it's closed. It's not that, they just went out there and said, we're gating it, they didn't ask us for anything, I don't even think they asked for emergency access, they just built an entrance. And that was it, the last applicant at Crompton Meadows came before us, just like you are today, and. Neighbors from Compton Road and the town solicitor showed up and told us that he didn't care if it was a strip home land with no buildings on it. He required them to go to East Greenwich and get the approvals, and I wanna say it was somewhat uh drawn out. Um TRC meetings, and then I think there's an agreement, there's some type of a liability agreement or something that got entered. Yeah, that needed to be negotiated, however, um. That said, um it worked out, that the entrance is there, um the concern I have is. I always like to see a second mi- means of ingress and egress, and I and I. That area right there has experienced an extreme amount of growth. Um I will tell you, if you get off ninety-five now and you wanna go to the the north. Area of Coventry, I'm talking towards Hope. Ways now directs you down New London Avenue, take a left, cut through Angus and come on North Road because of the volumes of traffic. That are on Arnold Road um at peak times, and we have over seven hundred units planned at the center of New England. And we have this project planned, and there are some people. For whatever reason, they'll take Crompton Road to Division to get four, there's businesses in East Greenwich that are gonna be certain by this. Um there's just a whole bunch of variables. Um that's not an argument for the access as much as it is. The coordination of all these projects is critical, and as I said before, not on the applicant. The town needs to start finding a way, whether it's tax treaties, capital improvement. That intersection of New London Avenue and Arnold Road is not a state intersection. And you've got cars getting off ninety-five to go to Center of New England, we're adding seven hundred units here, seventy-five units there, the volume of traffic going through that. Intersection at the on and off ramps, um they're starting to back up on ninety-five at night to get off to. Like if you're going to BJ's from ninety-five south, if you're coming from ninety-five northbound, there's no light there. To turn and get off at New London Avenue, and now we've got traffic that's gonna be dumping out on. Uh Hopkins Hill Road, which the other development is, and then we've got the apartments on Arnold Road. This needs to be a comprehensive traffic study, and. The cost of those improvements between Hopkins Hill Road and this intersection, perhaps even further down New London Avenue. Um with some type of a a merge lane or something to that effect, which scares me if we haven't put sidewalks in. Um these, it just needs to be looked at long term, there's an extreme, we're getting the benefit of the tax revenue. Uh from the businesses and and the residents that are gonna shop here, and the businesses are gonna, but but there's gotta be some funding source. Um available, and it's, like I said, it's not even a a state road. That light right there is the only light that the town was going to have to maintain in town, because all the other lights are. Are owned by the state, and when Camby put those lights in, the town had to go to the state and get an agreement to have them maintain it, so um. I can't emphasize it enough, I just hope um. You know, it's 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 not all on the developer, but I think it's it's a real concern, and I just hope that the traffic study they do. Is done in co- conjunction with the traffic study that's being done at Center of New England, and I think the town needs to play an active role. In coming up with some resources, either from the state, um through a grant. From tax treaties, because God knows um capital improvement money is virtually non-existent. And figure out how we're gonna fix this road network down here, if we're gonna benefit.
Yep, we have two hundred and ten units across the street from this door.
It's not going away.
No.
This isn't necessarily a planning board problem, it's not the applicant's problem, although they certainly would. Be be well within their interest to participate, but I think this is the uh, because the town council. Um let's look five years ahead, see what we're gonna be, but we're gonna have some problems.
Um if I might address that, you do anticipate with the 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 amount of development that we are um receiving. Right now at either master plan proposal or pre-applications. Uh is significant in this area, and I think traffic is one of the biggest weaknesses. This particular proposal in front of us tonight is only seeking seventy-five units, so they're not doing the lion's share of development, um but. I think your point is well taken, which is that uh they're gonna owe us a traffic study at preliminary, but that traffic study should be. Uh done in um. Uh i- in in unison with other traffic studies and other uh more uh broad and comprehensive traffic studies. Of how this is all gonna work together, so that everyone isn't just arguing that their slice of the pie works. But there's some traffic studies that demonstrate.
Right.
The awareness and the build-out analysis, the updated build-out analysis of what is happening in the area. I anticipate a lot of that traffic work is gonna come from other applications that are providing the lion's share of new development in the area. That doesn't mean that they don't have their role to play, but that's a, it's a point well taken, this is an application that finds itself in the in the heat of this development. Um but at master plan, I think they put, right now, for the purposes of this development, they provided sufficient traffic. Uh analysis for the purposes of this stage.
Right, and again, the other the other reason I brought it up is because if if let's say they just say, yep, we don't have a problem with on the sidewalks down in the corner, and then the traffic study yields. Oh, we gotta redo the whole intersection and all the sidewalks. Either don't need to be done by them, and they could have contributed something else, or they get ripped out after the waste of money, so. There's a lot of coordination. There's a lot of coordination. Good, if you think twenty-five percent affordable is enough, Ron, and I know affordable housing is a real big problem.
Not twenty, I told twenty.
Twenty, oh.
If, if I might interject, this applicant is essentially offering us twenty percent affordable. This is not a comprehensive permit. I would note if they chose to go to a comprehensive permit, they could seek a much greater amount of units, a much greater density on this property.
Thank you.
This applicant, I think, wanted a development that wasn't as dense. I think they're happy with the, the concept that's on the page and they were happy to provide us twenty percent. So I think we're, you know, when you compare this to what other tools this applicant may have, at twenty-five percent affordable. Um, they can yield a different type of outcome.
Thank you for the clarification.
All said over, good, anybody else?
Let's quick, let's.
Go ahead.
Uh, and I know you, all you experts here, the twenty-four inch roadway that the engineer approves, he's no problem with it, that's typical, right, in the neighborhood such as this?
It's a private.
Uh, it's private, so, okay. All right.
So the Highlands have twenty-four foot, if I wanna reference.
Okay.
The Highlands on Hop until there, they have twenty-four foot.
Yeah.
In a roadway.
So Sam, in a design like this, cars on the side of the road or people parking out of their driveways, that's not a concern, twenty-four. I'll just put it out.
Well, their condo associations are gonna.
Okay.
Take care of that.
All right, so then that'd just lead me to the one entrance way that you looked for, how wide is, how, I, is that the same distance? Twenty-four feet wide, the, the one egress entrance way out here, or is that wider?
We're anticipating an, an island separating, yes, a single lane, a singular lane in.
Twelve hundred.
Probably fourteen. On each side. Uh, you don't believe a, a, a dual exit is gonna be required or configured, so.
You didn't think you need two lanes coming out, one to go left, one to go right with the hundred fifty cars and traffic?
Uh, we, we don't believe so, but we, you know, the, the, the peak hour trips from seventy-five units is not. High enough. Typically require that, again, the changes in the road network, we're, we'll continue to look at it.
Sure.
But they, you know, the first pass is uh, certainly a, a single entrance for the scale and development is typical.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it's private. Thanks.
Anybody else? I, I'm gonna open a public area and then anybody can go on.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll wanna read my condition before you let it, make sure everything's clear on the record.
Yep, go ahead.
And then uh, for the record, uh, town staff have been in communication with the um, the legal staff at East Greenwich. Uh. And I will stand by the idea that interconnectivity as far as the roadway. Uh, does represent some good planning principles, however, it's understood that this would have a, a pretty strong uphill battle. In East Greenwich and they do have the right to refuse traffic. From this project to enter East Greenwich, uh, because there is a private parcel owned in the town of East Greenwich. And I would note that private parcel isn't part of our subject application today. It is located right here. And it has not been noticed and it's not considered part of the subject application, all the applicant is suggesting at master plan is that there's an ability. To have some connection in this general direction. Now, I'll just state the, the condition of approval that I'd like to be added, which is. The applicant must pursue a secondary vehicle access point to Compton Road, which might be emergency access only. With the town of East Greenwich through a private property located in East Greenwich identified as map lot seventy-seven dash thirteen dash thirty-two. It's that lot I just described. And or any other lots located in East Greenwich as may be necessary to accommodate vehicle access. The applicant must provide the decision and or outcome of East Greenwich's review of said roadway access and part of the preliminary plan submission to Coventry. We're asking the applicant to pursue with East Greenwich. Vehicle access, which might include just emergency access only. And then just come back to Coventry with the outcome of that pursuit. We did not see it as a deal pillar in Coventry, that singular access point to we does not make this project infuseable. It does perhaps improve it, but we understand we do not have all of the control to um, mandate access at that part of the problem. And that's the condition and I wanted that read just before we took any public comments, so that was all on the record, everyone understood the type of decision we were considering.
We have no objections to that.
Thank you. I, I have one other question for Sam, um, I wasn't at Free App, I apologize. This, was this considered another egress? Out of that cul-de-sac?
It exists, there is.
So you can make that a second means?
Basically, we identified it the same way, we. We, it, prior to submitting the, or going to P R D. We identified it to be there and available and there's no button down to make it happen.
So how far apart are those two entrances, you know? I, I don't want him to interfere with each other.
They're not, they're not supposed to, they would interfere, but I don't know.
Well, there is an option for a second means of egress on the line at the.
It's more than five hundred feet.
Oh, it's more than five hundred feet, okay.
I don't see many consequences.
That could, that could be a one-way though, that, I don't think it's big enough for.
I'm ready.
Two-way.
Yeah, most of the activity would be on the northern, uh, the southern end of it. And we could get a look at what that looks like.
Yeah, it's, it's identified as twenty feet, so.
Somewhere around here. Is it up here a little bit more?
Is that it?
Right there. Is this it?
No, no, yeah, that's it, that's it.
Right there.
So this, this point right here is the same. As this point right here, is that correct? Is that? I, I uh, personally, staff's opinion is that to yield uh, that access point as either emergency only or as regular. Vehicle traffic is a little redundant.
Okay.
Because of the fact that you're really not capturing that much, you know, uh, additional different units. This, from emergency access perspective, is valuable because if there was a tree to fall somewhere in this development and block the roadway, this gives the opportunity. For fire to get in there at a different point and the opportunity to clear access for other people to get in and out at different points. Um, so it represents a, a, a different geographic area on the site to add a lot of value.
Okay, that was my question. Anybody else before I open up?
Down on the bottom left-hand corner, it looks like another little driveway or something. That goes from East Greenwich.
Right there.
Yeah, right there, Ron.
I don't know if that's, is that accessible or?
It, what is that?
It is a portion of a former right-of-way that was not abandoned. So there was, there was a right-of-way through the property that was again. And the, the portion that extends beyond the property, I think, still maintains rights of access. So um. I don't know if I'm sure. Who, who has rights, all of rights, but it was not.
So, so it's potentially still there?
Uh. I'm sorry, let me just.
It may be to some people.
But there may be. It's not to the applicant.
That's correct.
Actually, it's, oh, it's not to the applicant, someone else owes it these minutes. And then they abandoned it going into this problem, so it's a third party.
You don't know, we don't. Anybody else before I open up public hearing? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to open up public hearing. I have a motion, Mr. Ray, I have a second by Mr. Ken, all those in favor? Okay, public hearing is now open. I'll start with you. Yeah, um, uh, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, what I'm concerned about is. We live there. Coming out on the one turnpike is next to a park. During the day. Maybe a stop sign or something, but we're idiots. We are with you from now. It would be good if it do a stop sign. The second thing is we, we have a right-of-way that is not a right-of-way, which is on Whittier, it goes into the woods. Going into that.
I think in the other side.
So is that, you, you on the left?
No.
They're in Whittier.
And that's where all the water problems are coming from. It's that area.
Yeah, we.
Oh, right there. Right on top.
Down a little more, I wanna see the subject, there we are.
You got, they call a paper screen over there?
Yeah.
Is that? Wait, I'm sorry. What do you want? See where the pool is all the way. To the right. Right to the right of that.
Right there in those woods. That's a paper road.
Okay.
Is that where the water's coming out?
That's where I have a lot of.
Twenty-ten, we had, we had. Excuse me, just five, Simon.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you can, you can testify, but you'll have to have your name and address. If, if you wanna do that, you certainly can.
Five three, hold that. Twenty-one, one.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry.
No problem.
Yeah, so in twenty-ten, we had, we had flooding problems. Um, and I moved there way before Walmart was there now, before the light was there, when it was just four-way stop or no one knew what they were doing. And I've seen the growth and the traffic is. It's so frustrating. Mainly when I come down from Arnold Road, turning left on the turnpike going north towards my house. That light, I had talked to Senator Vastikis before. And I talked to the town too, they couldn't tell me who governed that light. The town didn't know that this, it was a state road and then the state people told me to go to town. Which really floored me because. Really? But anyway, um. When I come down Arnold Road around four, four-thirty. I have sat through three light changes to make a left to go home. Because the opposite side from East Greenwich. The light is delayed a little bit, but there's no way of really knowing. And all the people that come out from four o'clock of what burning. It's just a constant stream, there's no arrow, there's no, and I was told that you, they would need to have. Um. A second lane to both go left in order to have a green arrow put there. And I, 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 I don't understand the logic, but the traffic is what. I mean, I just, it's, it's frustrating. When I just sit through three light changes to go home. And London Turnpike, it's just, it's a racetrack and everybody knows that, they put the sign, they put the, the speed signs there too and. I mean, twenty-five is, I tried to go twenty-five and I was literally. Um, there was a policeman behind me. And I was gonna go twenty-five just to prove to myself how physically able I was to do that. And he got close, didn't pull me over, nothing like that, I don't know if it was Coventry, I don't know what. Police it was, but it was four, I'm too far, I know, but um. So twenty-five is, is really, is really low and I. You know, I don't know what the reasonable speed would be, but if you try to go twenty-five, people have, I've been honked at, I've been. Flashlights at, I've had people cut around me, which is a very dangerous thing to do on that road. That's my main concern is the traffic. And that's just it.
And you can call the town for that stop sign.
I did, I have.
Yes. And we haven't.
And we, there was nothing that could be done.
Chuckie, if I can refer to you, what, what's the process, I'm trying to get.
To go public directions, it's good to go to the traffic committee.
So we have a traffic calming committee?
And yeah, you could send it to, um, send an email to Dan Perillo.
We have a traffic calming committee? You wanna reach out for that.
For that, I mean, I'll just note, stop signs are not considered a typical traffic calming measure.
Right.
Stop signs are installed when there, it's a traffic control measure, stop signs are installed. When there might be specific turning movement, clarifications, sight line issues. We generally don't install stop signs as uh, vehicle speed um, control mechanism.
Yeah, that I can understand, but, but. That light intention is, is insane. It's absolutely.
Well, as, as Mr. Colonial stated, that might be um, redesigned. Um, that's a good possibility.
There's gonna have to be something because, I mean, I'm literally considering this, because I.
Yeah. The London Turnpike is ninety-four.
You know, I'm five minutes from home and it takes me twenty-five minutes to get to my street.
You know, if I'm gonna get somewhere here, it gets scary to go down there, it's fast.
Yes.
Especially with the kids on.
These people I walk up back there like now, they have dark clothes on, you can't see them, they're walking, they're getting good light. It's, it's bad, couple of times I move by here.
It's about nine o'clock. He did the call and it's. And they bounced it back, they're blocking through the state, through the town.
But just yet. I'm having to fill the black crust across on the other side, on the other side. So that's one of two hundred cars that I had in the drain.
Well, we'll take, definitely take that into consideration. That's all right. Anybody else have any comments? Go ahead, name and address for the record, please.
Eric Stumpf, two seventy-one property road. Um, just a couple of questions, kind of comments with board, uh, we are in that corner lot right next to the emergency easement, so we have our property in Coventry. We have this guy. Yeah. Uh. So um, obviously, the second egress makes sense, but i- in terms of making it a permanent egress. Not be something ideal for us, we've got two young kids, we don't want kids, I mean, it's hard running right in and out. Um. The other part of that, and I know it's not really this application, but the previous one that was referenced before with uh, Compton Meadows. The, the egress and the entrance they made out there. Has a giant two L E D lights and flagpoles and it's lit up like Center of New England, but I don't know if it's through there tonight. Um, so if it does end up being a secondary egress. Just making sure that it's not tastefully not lit up like a commercial real estate like it is. Hundred and fifty yards down the road. Um. So that's one kind of just comment there, again, the secondary egress for emergency that's closed off. That makes sense, it's, it's more. I don't wanna come apart. Um, the second thing, and it's not talked about as much, cause it's not as much of the design for the buildings and whatnot, is the, the walking path around it. Um, it was a six-foot walking path that orders basically the entire property to just block. Um, that lands, I think, twenty feet off my property line. So it's, uh, again, their property whatnot, but now we've got folks that. Would be walking through our, basically our backyard that previously wasn't there. Um, again, not my property, but some kind of. Buffer or further down, um, it's, it's mostly my property and any of the properties that would be. Built in this new, new property thing, so I don't know why it wouldn't. Get my property line closer, I know that that's on my neighbors here, which probably wanna speak. Um, but if you want zooming on that bottom right corner there, where is the, you can see. I don't know.
So it seems that.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, so the six-foot walking, cave walking path around it, so.
Oh, it's paved.
No, we were, we were. It's intended as a. The tempo for a trail.
And they, and they can speak to that, what I think the best thing is to take all the public comments.
Yeah.
And then we'll ask the applicant.
They'll speak. I'm gonna take all public here first.
Those are, I mean, I know my neighbors have other things to say, but those are the two biggest things for our. Just to point out our properties that.
This one.
Uh, I know, the one to.
That one, oh, okay. It's better.
Yeah.
It's better than that one.
Well, still.
Not much.
Yeah.
This was also West Ward, right?
Uh, further down, isn't that part of Coventry?
This is. West Ward and East Greenwich.
This, this, this property is Coventry, this is East Greenwich and this is West Ward.
That's what I said.
But the other property.
There's the three corners right there.
Exactly. That's what I was saying. Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand, so yeah, that part of my house, our house.
Yeah, I understand, your, your house, your house is physically divided by the municipality.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fun.
Uh, so again, that's, like I said, just some consideration on that in terms of uh, some kind of buffer or not doing that path right onto the back of our property line where. We've never had anything like that before.
We can definitely stipulate a buffer.
I- in terms of, obviously, this isn't a closed gated community, so anyone could come in and use that walking path, it's not like the. Bike path here where there's parking lots and whatnot that people expect on a train line. This is gonna get created walking path that people in that area are gonna use because there's not good walking paths on sidewalks. Um, again, speaking of living on Compton Road, that's also a racetrack. Um, people in and out, it, it's a cut through East Greenwich. Um, I purposely go twenty-five down just to make people do the speed limit, we got two young girls at home. Um, and they fly around me, they go around us, I know they put a speed limit sign and people, it just doesn't, doesn't stall anything, so. Secondary permanent egress over there is a concern.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Richard Bigazola, two eighty-one Compton Road.
Go ahead.
As far as the, our, the end of my line to their line, how much of a buffer are we going?
Were you able to point out which house you have?
I mean, that's, that's mine.
You're the next house over?
Yeah.
Gotcha. What you're asking for, how, there, there's no landscape buffer shown on the plan yet, but we are not expecting landscape details till the next stage of review, so. I think your question is best answered by, uh, there is no buffer yet, but we will take any comments into consideration.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they'll come back with a landscape design at preliminary stage.
Yeah.
But they're writing everything down now.
Right.
So this, it's your concern, it's, it's, it's being noticed.
Yeah.
The applicant will address everybody's concerns. At once.
Yeah.
And then you can speak again. If, if, if they don't address it the way that. You like it, so.
May I just?
Yeah, jump right in.
I am not an engineer, and I don't pretend to be one, but it would be about a hundred feet, uh, of, of space between your property line and the next house, that's the proposal. Inside that a hundred feet, there'll be some landscape buffering. There'll be a buffer there? Yes, there will be. But the idea is how much of that I'd be thinking of taking? We're not taking anything of the property, and we're not. Right, not mine, but I mean, like, the line is gonna come, like, how far up to the line? Let me ask this very simply, what would you like? What it is now, it's probably seventy-five to eighty feet, because there's a drop-off that goes down. Would you like to, uh, no buffer, leave it natural? No, no, I wanna, we wanna buffer, okay, would you like abreviate, would you like? What the other guy, like, did the.
The green giant abrevieties.
Abrevities, those would be fine. Okay. And if you know the land, the land, like, if, back of my head, walk back to the land, and then it drops like that. We'll put a buffer down at the bottom, you want them, they're up by top, okay. I just, if you, let me just say this, between this hearing and if we get to the next stage, secondary, be happy to meet with you. Yeah. So I'll just say, I mean, meet you on the site, have one of the applicants be, you tell us what you want, we're, we're very accommodating. Okay. Thank you.
That's excellent.
That sounds good.
Anybody else?
Right, yes.
I just wanted to.
I.
Well, why don't we let other?
Yeah, we can come back. Name an address, please.
Joel Amu, three, three, seven, Crompton Road. Um, since we, you haven't, um. Uh, issued a, uh, green plan. To caveat of what he's saying is, the, the sparse trees that I have back there are pretty thick, it's actually deceptive. From my property, if you go back, you do have that sheer drop-off. But you stand in my backyard, it looks like it goes back a mile, but then it only goes back a couple hundred feet and it drops. But what we have is beautiful, like, you know, as long as that's not being torn down, like, I know you have to put the wall up, because. That is very loose, that is a very loose, uh, drop-off. Uh, you are gonna get some soil erosions from the rains, and it's gonna wash into the new neighborhood that you're building. But, yeah, I would just like to see that, that green zone that we have on, and it is Coventry side. Um, like my, like, like the, them, I'm on East Greenwich and I'm on Coventry, so I've paid taxes in both towns, you're welcome.
The same thing is that we'll be happy to meet with you. Yeah, work with you, see some reasonable stuff, whatever combination that's reasonable, we will do that.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'm just looking forward to when you do publish your green plan to look at that.
We, we'll have it, uh.
It'll be at preliminary.
It, it'll be the, uh, public document that we sent, uh, well before the next hearing. Okay. We'll look at.
And you'll have the same venue at preliminary, you go, I can come and. No, we're hoping that's done, but I can't guarantee that.
Okay, my other question?
Uh, one, anybody else that hasn't spoke yet? Okay, why don't you?
And I need your name each time.
Name and address, please, name and address.
Richard Bigazola, two eighty-one Compton Road. When this place is being built, that access road that you have next to, to seventy-one Crompton Road. We don't want that used as construction vehicles going in there. So, in other words, that's what we're looking for, we don't want no construction or any, any kind of vehicles, if the board want. The board wanna put that as a restriction, then all, all disruption vehicles would go from New London Avenue, we would have no objections to it at all, okay? That's. We don't know more.
You have another question, sir?
Yeah, Eric, uh, two seventy-one Crompton, just to piggyback off, where the drop-off is, there, there's a, if you go back to the plot. Uh, actually. You can kinda see where there's a, there's the. Again, there's a bigger green area there than what's on the walking trail, a- again, just consideration of that walking trail, the buffers on the other side of that too, or. Move it closer to the, like, the proposed houses. Um, just because, again, seeing someone, a neighboring house that got built there probably wouldn't be the biggest deal, it's, it's, again, someone walking through what we. Has proceeded our backyard, just right on the end.
I think that's very reasonable.
Yeah. So, yeah. Because if you go back to the Google Maps side of it, um. You can see where there's a, there's a dirt trail that's kinda through there already, that's where the drop-off is. The walking trail splits the trees currently right now, the proposal, and that's where the property lines are, but. That's how much buffer we have right now. And just would hate to see it go right through that, again, we've got a lot of trees there, but. You'd see somebody, we used to see, I'm sure everybody knows the dirt bikes, used to ride through the sand pits and whatnot.
Yeah.
Um, you see it, 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 you see it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, the, the applicant, address any of the questions, I mean, I think you already have.
We'll continue to, to work with the town and the neighbors. Uh, you know, as, as you can see, and you can hear from the East Greenwich, from the sewer, uh, from the EM and GUT, there's a lot more work than actually. This is the very, very beginning of the process, so we're asking for the master plan. And the layout, and then we'll come back and fine-tune it when we have all the information. And he probably won't see us for months and months, because there's so much work to do. And respectfully, state agencies just don't move fast, it's the nature of government, with nothing moves fast, so. You, you're talking at the earliest, the spring, more likely the, the summer, but we have a lot of work to do, we have to wait for the, the most important thing, uh, in my opinion, is the sewer study. Is that if we don't have sewer, we don't have a project, or, or we have something dramatically reduced to what we see. So, once we get that, then the, all the state agencies come, Sam has got lots of work to do on this project, we have work to do on other projects too. And, uh, we'll come back on, uh, late spring, early summer, hopefully.
Yeah.
And, uh, we'd be happy to provide my contact information to any one of the neighbors or anybody who has questions, to call me. Or, um, another attorney in my office named Joe Brennan, who handles most of the stuff, I'm pinch hitting for him, so I just keep, uh, what dung baby wasn't well. So, uh, um, be happy to help anyone or answer any questions and continue the dialogue. My clients, they're, they're very, uh, sensitive to development, they wanna make sure that now the town likes it, but the neighbors like it, they wanna make sure it's a beautiful place to live. They want, um, you know, to be successful, and they want people to like it, right, now, that's our hope. But we thank you, and I, I will say this, and I, I think I said earlier that. You've got a great planning staff here.
Thank you.
But I believe, I, I'm in all thirty-nine cities and towns, you don't get the professionalism you get here, doesn't mean we agree on everything, by the way, I mean that. But I mean that, but you get professionalism, you gotta return phone calls, you gotta return email, and you gotta reasonable explanation, whether you agree with it or not. And that doesn't happen in a lot of other communities, so the board should be thankful and grateful what they have.
Thank you, Chris. And as, and as Mr. Blaine also said, if they went with a denser project with a comprehensive permit. Would be much denser, so the applicant is showing that they're not getting everything they can in that parcel. Okay. Is there anybody else before I close public hearing?
Have a question.
One more?
Um, in terms of like, so we were notified.
Name and answer.
Um, we were notified by like a letter about these meetings, and obviously, they're off, they could say spring, summer, or whatnot, because they're gonna be continuing notification, they're asking to the neighbors. Like I said, I got two little ones at home, and we'll lose track of them.
The mail and, and newspaper, mailing newspaper.
Okay, no, the mail was helpful, that's the only reason I got about it.
You'll, you'll get another letter in the mail once the application is scheduled for another, uh, uh, meeting in front of this board. Hopefully not in this room.
We made it work.
Thank you.
That wasn't.
Anybody else before I close public hearing? Hey, I'll make, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Make a motion to close it.
I have a motion by Mr. Ray, and a second by Mr. Smith, all those in favor? Okay, motion, uh, is approved, close public hearing. Okay, I think, uh, as a board, we could talk about that access onto Crompton. I'm fine with the crash gate, uh, fire department's fine with the crash gate, if you want the applicant to, um, investigate that through East Greenwich. That's an option too, but I think we need to have that right now at master plan. For the benefit of the applicant.
I think the crash gate would be sufficient, as Sam explained, only seventy-five houses.
I, I, I'm comfortable.
Crazy on that, I, you know, with Sam, I, you know, I agree with him, he's a professional, uh. Engineer, and, um, I think that would be sufficient, as long as they can get the crash gate put in, and keep peace with East Greenwich.
And I think the fire department, uh, was looking at what, a twelve-foot wide gravel, if I'm not mistaken. So it would be a gravel access, but it would only be if, if they needed.
I have a question, the, the, the proposed, uh, language statute. Planning director, we came up with, that was to go to East Greenwich and investigate, is, is that for the crash gate, or is that for the crash gate or only for full access or either?
I might suggest, based on discussion of the board, that that condition of approval could be amended. To suggest that the applicant, and no matter what, they need EG approval for the crash, for the crash. Uh, but it's clear that EG, uh, does not have a concern with the crash gate, and they would be able to review that administratively.
Okay.
Uh, if we want full vehicle access, it's not clear if EG would permit that in the end, and it would require going in front of EG planning.
Right.
Um, what I had provided could be amended to suggest that the Coventry is seeking only a vehicle, uh, emergency vehicle access. And that would, um, be more direct for this applicant to, uh, move through the process, leaving EG.
That's why I asked, because I wanted to know if you still had to go to ask them about the crash.
And then we're hearing from various agents that they'd rather see the crash.
Yeah, yeah, no problem, I just, I wanted to make sure.
I'm comfortable with it, yeah.
And, and if that gets approved with EG, something in the covenants for the HOA, that that gets maintained.
Yeah.
Because as Kevin was saying before, you know, West Ward put a couple poles in, it's all overgrown.
Nottingham states, I think, isn't it?
What's that, is it Nottingham?
Yeah.
But there's no.
Yeah, Nottingham.
But some, some HOA language, so that gets maintained, so a fire engine has to go through there ten years, it's not trees across that all overgrown, and they can't.
Understood.
It has to be maintained like, like the drainage areas and common areas.
Yep. Good point.
I mean, appreciate it.
Yeah, there you go.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just have a comment, um, and I appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with the neighbors, I just wanted to point out, you know, a lot of that has to do with the grades over there. Between the walking path, the buffer, and the distances, again, it wouldn't make much sense to put a buffer at the bottom of a twenty-foot drop-off.
No.
Because it's not gonna grow high enough, but by the same token, I think some of what was shown on that map was actually a tree line that's on the subject property, so that's really more like a no-cut buffer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, but, uh, I'll be satisfied if, if they work with the neighbors to try to see, but. Um, I don't know why the walking path was placed there, maybe because it was at the top of the ridge, but I think the point is, they just don't wanna see the houses, and I think they don't wanna get. But I looked at the grades up there, no one brought that up, that thing must just drop right into the hole.
Oh, yeah. Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the variance.
Chair, I'll make a motion on the variance. Um.
There's multiple variances, correct? Correct, for the record, depending that the two variances they're seeking are, one, there's a, a proposed density variance, the applicant has demonstrated and through their records. That they could yield seventy-four lot by right, and they're seeking seventy-five, and I, I should reframe, not lots, units.
Mm-hmm.
The other variance is that they're seeking to locate all of these seventy-five units on one lot. Um, so that, those are the two variants we're feeling, so.
Okay. Um, project name, New London Preserve. Alpha Holdings LLC, owner applicant, AP lot seven. AP seven, lot twenty-five, AP eight, lots two, three, and nine. AP sixteen, lot one thirty-three, zone R twenty, lot size fifty-three point nine acres. Proposed use is single-family condominium. Condominium units. Um. Like, make a favorable recommendation on both variances, one, uh, seeking. Um, seventy-five units instead of a, a max of seventy-four. And the other, um, seeking to place all the units on a single lot, I would like to incorporate the staff report in my motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Kenny, you have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any other discussion?
My only discussion is that that motion for the staff report is conditioned upon approval of the final plan of the major land development application.
And then my motion.
Thank, thank you very much, Sean.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion carries on the variance. I'll entertain a motion on the application. For the major land development.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll keep going, project name, New London Preserve, Unified Development Review. Uh, new phase of master, our applicant, Alpha Holdings LLC, address, New London Turnpike. AP lot seven, AP seven, lot twenty-five, AP eight, lots two, three, and nine. And AP sixteen, lot one thirty-three, zone R twenty, lot size fifty-three point nine acres. ，则用空地， proposed use is single fam- family condominium unit. The applicant proposes to develop seventy-five Z-TAC, single-family condominium units, each. Of which would be roughly twenty-five thousand, excuse me, two thousand five hundred square feet in size, to include an attached two-car garage. Um. Likes to make a favorable motion. And include the staff report in my motion.
And if I may, add the sidewalks. I'd like to, um, well, one, I'm gonna read the, uh, specific condition of, that we're gonna add to this, and I have the language here. The applicant must pursue a secondary emergency-only access. Uh, to Crompton Road, through the town of East Greenwich, through a private property located in East Greenwich, identified as map lot seventy-seven dash thirteen dash thirty-two. End or any other lots located in East Greenwich is maybe necessary to accommodate emergency-only access. The applicant must provide the decision and or outcome of East Greenwich's review. Uh, of access as part of a preliminary plan, submission to Coventry, and then there may be another condition of approval. Uh, that we can discuss as it relates to sidewalks, and, um, do you have anything, uh, specific you were thinking, or just to ask the applicant? To, um, as part of their preliminary plan, to include sidewalks in the front of their property on New London. In, in front of the property, including, um, the property, uh, that is identified as, I wanna say it's AP eight lot one. Which, uh, a portion of this property is within, um.
Showing that.
Yeah. Uh, you're right, it's right up here. Yeah, APA eight lot one, I think that the direction that I'm hearing is for sidewalks to be included. Uh, that entirety of that parcel is not included for this subject petition, but it is understood the applicant has control of it. They may wish to develop single-family lots here as a separate petition, but through this application, we would be seeking the extension of this sidewalk across, across that length. Is that a fair understanding of everything?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, you put that in your motion.
Maybe my motion.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion?
I want a clarification from the applicant, it says roughly twenty-five hundred square feet, are you satisfied being bound at twenty-five hundred square feet or less than twenty-five hundred? It's probably gonna end up being a little bit less. Little or not, not to exceed.
I think name and. No, you're good?
I, I don't have.
Uh, name and address. He's gonna swear you in.
He's gonna tell the truth, Anthony? Mr. Paul?
Always.
Thank you.
Probably will be a little less.
It, it could be, aside, but no, not greater than twenty-five hundred square feet. So would you amend your motion to say not to exceed twenty-five hundred square feet instead of roughly twenty-five hundred square feet?
Yes, I'll amend my motion to say not to exceed twenty-five hundred square feet.
So move amended, second amended, any others discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, have a good holiday.
I mean, when you think about five, or, five more percent of the points of affordable housing.
Call me Johnny.
I know.
I know. Thank you. Thank you. Job for that wire. Thanks, Doc. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we have uh number eight. Point one, we have a letter from Coventry Conservation Commission that was actually sent to the planning department and myself. Dated December eleventh. If you wanna just give an introduction.
Yeah, I'll give a brief introduction for the topic and then Mr. Pendergast. The planning staff also do staff the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission has recently reinstated. Um there's a group that uh lacked a quorum and didn't exist for several years. They've been recently reconstituted. Uh they've had four or five meetings, maybe less than that.
Or in a couple of them.
So um they've expressed an interest in understanding what role the Conservation Commission might have in development review. The code does not provide the Conservation Commission with the role at all in development review. And the Conservation Commission lacks the ability to initiate the review on its own term. Um but I didn't, I did indicate to them that the Conservation Commission can uh introduce. Themselves as a reinstated group. Uh can certainly make the Planning Commission aware of the skills, expertise they have as it relates to natural resource protection and other environmental issues. And if there is a time where this board is provided with an application. Where you think in an advisory opinion from the Conservation Commission would add value. Then this board has the right to seek that advisory opinion. Normally, this might be uh the kind of project where we would have a lot of natural resource. Uh let's just say resource issues in which the town might be able to redirect the project different ways. Particularly a cluster subdivision project where there might be unique. Natural resources and we get to decide where should the open space go? Should it go protect this resource or should it protect that resource? Those might be the kinds of applications where um we could really use that additional direction. It's at the Planning Commission's complete discretion. And normally this would be a scenario where we've got a project that comes for you in front of you at pre-app and you might suggest that pre-app. I'd like to see an advisory opinion from the Conservation Commission. Be added and provided by this applicant when they come back for master plan. Um so uh that's the introduction and then uh Conservation Commission has drafted correspondence to you to indicate. Uh their interest and willingness and I'll uh I'll let Mr. Pendergast take it from there. And feel free if you want to sit down at the table, Tom.
No, it's all right. Thanks, everyone. Hi, my name is Tom Pendergast. Uh I live at six White Rock Road in Coventry. Uh I've been there for uh since two thousand seventeen. And um I'm a member of the Coventry Conservation Commission. I'm also the vice president of the Upper Dam Pond Conservation Association. And for those who don't know where the Upper Dam Pond is, it's in the northeast corner of. Coventry bounded by Jervis Street and. Nadi Oak Road. And I'm also the secretary on the Board of Directors for Save the Lakes Rhode Island. So I submitted a letter uh that you may have had a chance. I'll just read it to you and then I'll answer any questions you might have. So Coventry Conservation Commission recognizes that human action. Can irreparably harm flora and fauna in our town and our policies as a commission. And actions are intended to protect and repair that natural environment. So the Coventry Conservation Commission would like to work with the Planning Commission in its advisory capacity. To share our knowledge of the environment as needed for future planning in the town. We would like the opportunity to review plans and advise when asked. About topics within our expertise, several of our members helped write goals in the Coventry Comprehensive Plan, including myself. Uh in land use, natural resources, natural hazards and climate change. Uh and we can be an asset to the Planning Commission. So.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
What did you envision? Going TRC, participating in TRC?
No, I envisioned that that the way it would work is that a project in and of itself and through staff does not trigger. A role with the Conservation Commission. When there's a project such as a major land development, a major subdivision, this board holds the authority and solely this board. Um I'm not allowed to um invite other people to comment at TRC. I'm not allowed to invite other opinions, whether it be Conservation Commission, Historic District Commission, any other economic development committee. So really, this is your ability when you see a plan at an early stage and you wish for additional guidance. Um this board's making it known that they're available to give that guidance. They're they're reconstituted. Um you know, they're they're meet they're meeting regularly now and they're available to give you that guidance or advisory opinion should you seek it. That would be authorized by this group. Um saying I'd like to this project to go get an advisory opinion. Any individual member of the Conservation Commission can always appear at any at any meeting and provide their comments as an individual. And they can rely on their own individual perspective or expertise as they see fit. But that individual cannot report that they represent the entire Conservation Commission when they speak. And if you do want that entire commission to 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 hear their opinion, that that would require your action first. Alex, if you don't mind helping him up outside of the door.
And then a question to the um to myself on the commission, the four members are here on the.
Yeah, I uh I saw that. I don't I put it away. Do you read off the four members' names?
Gary Narcoitz is the president of Tired Lake Association. He's an engineer, teacher and environmentalist and he's the chair of the association of the commission. Mike Provost, uh a recent graduate from the University of Rhode Island, environmental scientist and concerned resident. Uh Dino O'Brien and an attorney and development impacted resident. And myself, uh vice president, as I said, of Upper Dam Pond Conservation Association and connected with uh Save the Lakes.
For Upper Dam instead of breezy?
Uh only locals. Or if you swim, there was a kid.
Oh, I know. I would, no, we had we had the nads. I I swam in middle dam.
Oh, very good. So we saved that pond like we saved Upper Dam Pond.
I stayed it on that pond many a times.
Yeah, so I didn't. So you're probably very familiar in two thousand seventeen and eighteen, you couldn't see the water at Upper Dam Pond. It was so bad. So we formed the association, uh raised the funds, uh worked. Very closely with the town. Uh I know all the directors here very closely. And we treated the lake and we maintained it as an association. And then we also treated uh middle dam pond as well, so.
You make your fundraising goals again?
Uh yes, yes, we did. Did you go to Cookies and Coco with Santa?
No, no. Right, no, all my kids did. They got their. My 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 middle, my middle son, my middle son uh live right uh.
You see the barometer.
I see the barometer all the time, yeah.
So if if I could, just one more moment, um I just wanna make one project that the town. Uh is working on currently. Uh and that's a stormwater project. So we believe that the way stormwater is being managed in the state of Rhode Island and in town of Coventry. Could use some help. So stormwater comes into the storm drains. And there and there it goes directly into lakes. Right? So the sediment goes into the lake. And phosphorus goes into the lake. And none of that is treated or repaired before it gets into the lake. So the town of Coventry and Upper Dam Pond worked with the EPA. And the University of New Hampshire Stormwater Center. And we developed a design that will remove sediment and phosphorus before it goes into the lake. Removing ninety-nine percent of the sediment and up to eighty-five percent of the phosphorus before it comes into the lake. So if you're familiar with how fertilizer takes care of your lawns, the phosphorus off the streets and roads. Uh comes into the lake and creates an aquatic invasive species problem of which all lakes have. Every lake will fill in. It's called neutral vacation. And it's a standard process. Uh if you're any of you are on Johnson's pond, you know how shallow it's gotten over the years and how many. Tens of thousands of dollars it takes to treat a lake to get rid of the aquatic invasive species. You can get it before it starts by putting these storm drains in. They're low maintenance, they're low cost and they're highly effective. And. None of the storm drains in the town of Coventry currently use them. So we're testing two of them on Pondview Drive. Which is off Jervis Street. Uh we've got uh a grant from the EPA and SNAP Southern New England Program. And we're going to um install those. The design is done and we're gonna put those in next spring. And then we'll separately test them through the University of Rhode Island. And compare what's coming into the lake now with what the new design is showing. To make those available. Obviously, the town will be. Uh I noticed we were very closely with Maria Broadbent. Uh and then all the directors have had a hand in the design and implementation. So it's a prototype for future.
How about the one in the quad? Is that working?
Uh it's a storm scepter design and it is pulling out the sediment. So for those of you that don't know, a storm scepter is like a giant washing machine, right? That goes around. But it does not address the phosphorus. Uh the one at White Rock.
The test holes were done.
Yeah, the uh the owner declined. Uh to use his basement for use.
I said, I did those test holes five years ago.
So we're gonna rely on the state because two of the ten outfalls come off of Route one sixteen into Upper Dam Pond. And the state is required because the lake is a TMDL total maximum daily load for phosphorus. To remediate the water before it goes into the lake. So two of those, the state has to provide remediation and they'll be putting in. What we now call SCMs, stormwater control measures. Which pull the phosphorus out and the sediment out. So. We'll keep you folks informed as we put them in next spring and hopefully that's the prototype. When some of these builders are coming in to put in standard storm drain. They can consider putting in something that is low cost, low maintenance, because the town already owns a back truck. And can pull all that sediment out and they're highly effective.
What's the name of the uh the type of drain that you were looking to install for your project?
So it's a non proprietary and uh we designed it with the University of New Hampshire.
We say we. Is meaning the.
The town of Coventry and.
So are you suggesting a standard? That's basic. Selecting stormwater collection lines that you could actually. Write into code. And that every developer would. It's not up to us to say, will they consider it? We're gonna get the town council public works to name it and then make it easy. So if it's low cost, it's not.
It's low cost, it's low maintenance, it's highly effective and we'll have the uh we'll have the uh statistics to show how effective it is.
That's cool.
The the key person will be the town engineer who ultimately does review. All of our um stormwater analysis what's provided to us and then also has the biggest role in what should go in our code. I'm sure Joe.
Always on the team.
Yeah, Joe Beck has been in touch with you, so um I mean, that's that's the key guy as he looks at plans. Either whether it needs a code change or if he sees opportunities in specific plans. This board already has the benefit of uh Joe's perspective on every project through TRC.
What's that like in the drains? What is like a? Put it inside the pipes and stuff.
So we have three different designs we worked on based on the area. So one of them is a more rain garden, wide open space. So you can use those in places that the town owns. So there is a big access way, for example, off of Jervis Street, right in front of Kevin's property, if you know where Kevin McGee lives. And that goes straight back into the lake and you can take your time. Taking the phosphorus out of the water before it gets to the lake. The original design we had was four feet deep. And um I pond view the water table was at six feet and got to two feet at times. So they redesigned um. Through the pre-construction process to go to two foot deep and longer. And um just as effective on the design. So we actually have three different designs that we can use. Um based on the different.
Is it is it inside the pipe or is it outside?
No, it's outside the pipe. So it's it's all standing.
Drain, if a drain fills up. And you get dirt goes in the go in, fills up, what happens? You have to go in there and dig it out.
No, the dirt doesn't. The dirt gets vacuumed out. The sediment gets vacuumed out.
Oh, does?
Yeah. According to a town schedule, right now they do it annually.
Well, yeah, there's two two types. Most of most of the drains get cleaned with a bucket truck. That means you go and you dig it out. Only a handful get sucked out, only in a special. So if you put them in all of them. That's a that's a lot of money.
It's a it's an existing back truck, but.
I I know, I that's what I'm doing for a living. I'm drainage.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking you because we we go this stuff down here and then we get to get, we gotta get the back back truck. We have two back trucks. We have. Uh six uh. Diggers, the diggers do. Twenty a day, the back truck does two in there. Which we have that it's it's a whole different center. So that's what I'm saying. If it's inside the pipe, sometimes you give me a head, if you put it inside the pipe. You get you get, you know. Up against the wall or something, clean it.
No, it's it's outside, right?
The town has a backdrop.
Uh it's a backdrop.
And these are gonna meet the DM regulations.
Yeah, DM's already been, uh they were involved in the project. As a matter of fact, down at Pondview, there is no regulation if the um. If the SCM is outside of their buffer, which. If I remember, is a hundred fifty feet. So this is gonna be installed in the roadway. Under the roadway, so there is no problem with uh. Um the need to talk to an owner about using their property and um some of the. Some of the storm drains are fifty years old in this town, so. That's why we're not using the storm drain itself. It's a box that sits outside the storm. Yeah, and this will have special chains to keep things like uh. Fuel bottles and yeah, and floatables and I mean, you you folks may be aware of the problem. They've got a Johnson's pond right now in a certain flat there. They're taking the dog bags uh and they're not only just leaving them on the street where they get swept up by storm water, but they're actually throwing them in the storm.
Well, we get, I I I see a lot of people who said we have the water and they just try to.
Yeah, so these catches will pick that. Will pick all that stuff up. Anyway, um thank you very much for your time. Doug has my contact information if anybody has any uh any questions.
Well, thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much, very much, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, remember the board just um I was just trying to look um. There is obviously the Conservation Commission is a state created organization, a state. Statutory creator organization, but my concern is, and I just want the board to be aware of, you're gonna trigger them, you're gonna have to trigger them pretty early. Um because we forget, you're gonna be up against the ninety day deadline if master plan is, you can't do that. If somebody can't come in in uh in pre-app and you order them to Conservation Commission. I don't think that's appropriate. And I don't think you're gonna be ordering ordering them to go to the Conservation Commission after they file their master plan. It might be. That you may. At master plan or at pre-app depending on what they show, either ask them to voluntarily go. Or maybe you just ask the plans to be submitted to the Conservation Commission. I just think that I just want the board to do. You start trying to build them into the process and you're gonna build a night, another obstacle.
What I was gonna. Let them having a plan as soon as they're submitted.
No, no, so so here's my guidance to the board.
You know it was on the board, right? You read the names?
Yeah. You know, and here's my guidance for the board. You know, and I want everyone to be aware, you know, that, you know, we're obviously we want these meetings uh uh these meetings can be viewed and everyone that that can see them. I think the Conservation Commission has the potential to add value to review, but I think that this board is the board that triggers. Their review. It can't be that the Conservation Commission gets plans when staff get them. And then we consider whether or not they should be prepared or engaged to comment on those planes. They're they're brought into the fold when this board deems it appropriate through its authority. That it would seek an advisory opinion and where I think it would normally go would be a larger scale project or a project that has a unique. Environmental issue and you would get the project at pre-app. And you would ask the applicant to seek an advisory opinion and bring it with them when they submit for master plan. Or it could be that you see the project. Or it could be that you see the project at master plan and you ask the applicant to seek an advisory opinion that they would bring with them at preliminary. Keep in mind, the farther you go, the more an applicant now is designing their site and it's very hard for them to redesign the site. If they're hearing comments from the Conservation Commission. Now, this board is charged with the responsibility of balancing all of the issues. Uh, property right issues, environmental issues, regulatory issues, when it makes a decision. And this board is very sharp at that. This board has a great deal of, uh, experience. On the way to handle these reviews, it's at a high level. When you send things to boards that aren't accustomed to that, they may not know the boundaries. Of when you're asking for something that may be beyond a reasonable accommodation for a typical applicant. And, um, and that's why I think that this board should always be very conscious about when they're going to send a project. And the specific type of information you'd be seeking when you do send the project. That's just my guidance to the board.
And I think too that if they, they have an issue with a project, they're going to come at public hearing.
That was kind of what I was suggesting. I wasn't suggesting we didn't. That was saying is if they want to be proactive. They can come get the information as soon as it's submitted. And if they see a concern or they want to do a review. They should send a letter or send, what they, what they used to do, how many years ago, right? Cause I think Cindy Fagan is on the board. They used to submit a letter. And said, we saw the, we saw the plans that got submitted. These are our concerns and we used to get that. So that was before the meeting.
Right, so. So here's my comment to that, is the Conservation Commission was not authorized by their charge. To unilaterally elect when they're going to review a project. To bring a specific project in on their own agenda and to conduct a review on their own. Um, it'd be akin to someone, you know, mandating a step in review process that is not mandated by local code. Or by state law. Um, the Conservation Commission is instructed that they are able to conduct a review when they're asked for one. By an authorized body.
But not otherwise?
Not otherwise. An individual. Member of the Conservation Commission is free to come and make their comments. They just cannot purport to speak for the whole commission. The commission as a public body. Cannot act unilaterally to bring their own opinion to a project unless they're asked for it. And that's the position that, that staff has taken and that's the position. That the current arrangement of authority, uh, is organized.
Makes sense, yeah.
And I'm just gonna, I just want to add. That I still think the board. Should not be sending an applicant to it and have to put in the whole presentation on. That's just my advice. If you want to say, you asking for conservation to give you an opinion on this. And, uh, you asking them to do it in a timely way, but you make it clear that if they don't get it done, because they have a, a scheduling period, then they don't get it back to you for your next meeting, you're going to go forward.
Perhaps that would be at Doug's level, not ours.
And, and I also think too.
Instead of bringing them to a meeting, David. Doug could. Reach out to, at your person and say, hey, we've got this going on instead of doing what I'm eating. You know. Guys, take a look at and get back to Doug.
Doug. The, the, the key is this, the second that you order. The second that the board asks for an advisory opinion from the Conservation Commission. Be aware that the applicant. On a sensitive project, a project in which they may have hundreds of thousands of dollars. They're going to provide their full representation there because they don't want to have a minimal representation caught with an issue. And not correctly address it, not feel like the record is straight. Have the Conservation Commission perhaps. Uh, landed a recommendation or an opinion on something without the full record. An applicant will generally choose. To bring their full complement of attorney, engineers, other experts as needed to the Conservation Commission. So when you do elect for that, be aware, you're, you're asking for the applicant. To add a, 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 a significant stop to the process. Now, I don't think that it's out of bounds for you guys to seek that. But I think that it is good for you to be aware. That, you know, an applicant, there's no version of this where I'd say, let's just put it on and see what the Conservation Commission says. The applicant has a right. To be there and the applicant has a right to, to, uh, present their project so that it is presented. With all of the information the applicant would like to, um, have on the record at that meeting.
Well, Doug, I think we. I, I completely agree with you. All I'm saying is the board should not be directing an applicant to go put on the whole show at another board. I, I think, I, I, if the applicant chooses to do that, that's fine.
Yeah, that, that, the, the board, the board is not. And I'm just warning that an average applicant might feel as though they must. And that is their choice. The applicant does not need to show. At that kind of meeting, but when you make that recommendation, many applicants will say, I'm not going to go. Half-hearted and I'm not going to allow the board to speak unless I'm there.
I, I think, I think what I was saying is if they have a concern, they can come up and speak at the project's public hearing. Correct. We also take. Uh. Public statements a lot of times are pre-app.
That's my.
Sure. So they can come as we would review on a butter. And they could do those concerns or the applicant would have their concerns, but I wouldn't like to see like, uh, David says, to send them. And ask for an advisory committee, advisory committee, so the applicant would think that they would have to go in front of their board. That to me would be another layer. We're trying to reduce layers.
Now, keep in mind, while I agree, any individual can speak at the meeting. If that individual wishes to speak on behalf of the commission, then they're waiting for you. To authorize such an advisory opinion to be sent by.
Let me ask this question. Why can't? Why can't staff make a recommendation to the board in their staff report that there's a sensitive environmental issue? And we suggested in this particular case, it goes to the car, even though it's the board's decision. Because if somebody's not getting through that, it, I just think that you're going to end up having, every, every month, they're going to be having meetings.
I think that the idea is that staff have the ability to recommend to you.
I think.
To send something to the commission. I think this commission. Has a lot of the expertise that it already needs here on the boards. And I think staff have the technical bearings and boundaries, uh, on environmental issues to help you. Um, I'm just making you aware that if there's something above and beyond, or there is another resource that you can utilize, and that was the purpose of this. Staff is aware that we can recommend you use that resource too. But at the end of the day, it's ultimately the board's decision. And if I did see a unique situation. Uh, oftentimes my, my role would be to do the background research for you. There's a unique. Situation, there's a unique, um, environmental feature, uh, ecological value that we really need to understand. My course of action would be to say applicant first, you need to send that. And you need to provide us with all the basic facts and bearings of information. And if I don't think that we were getting that, then I would be pressing that applicant. And then when, if we had a course direction that was needed and I was unclear, then I might seek that. Uh, or I might inform myself as best I can with other professionals and, and other resources that I have. Um, the idea would be. This board, I think, does have a lot of those skills. And so you understand those technical issues when it comes. Um, this is not a, this is not a board that doesn't understand, um, technical issues. So I think that you've got those capacities here as well. That's, that's my, that's my quick summary.
I agree. I under, you know, I understand, uh, uh, this, this board has a lot of authority and decisions and future of the town. What does the Conservation Commission have for a story?
Uh, I, I think the Conservation Commissions in Rhode Island. Are generally commissions where they take on self-initiated projects that aren't development. I think what Mr. Pendergast described as working with the town, trying to advance policies, trying to advance technologies, trying to interject where. Some of this might be best, uh, uh, done at a systematic level. That's a more typical thing. They might say, you know, hey, let's take on the idea of the town needs a forest management plan. Uh, someone needs to quarterback that, find the grant funds, find a, 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 a resource, uh, look at the information. That's their domain. Development review in Rhode Island is generally not within the domain of the Conservation Commission. Thank you.
And for good reason.
That's it. He came and said, hey, if you need me, I'm here as a resource. And what we're saying is, we need you, we'll let you know, but right now. No, 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 because what I was getting at is I think the way I directed him, if he wants, if he says, these are the types of things we should be using. Go to public works and get it as a standard.
Yeah.
Have a press release and maybe more than him pounds of adapt.
It's just, this, the board has an obligation to do things in a timely manner.
Yeah.
And it's, and I haven't seen this board once. Not be able to. Find. Technical information that's required.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
And, and I've always been here for two years, but that's what I've seen.
Thanks to the staff, as we said, because he, he makes.
It, it's not to be negative.
We've seen a big difference with the staff. Ninety day.
I, I, I don't mind their ass.
Oh, I think they have a legitimate place.
Yeah, I think they do. And I think that.
But on every project.
Yeah. And I think this board is very sharp and this board, um. There are boards where maybe they do need that extra additional. Uh, assistance here and there. I think this board is the, from my perspective, is not one that generally needs a lot of additional assistance.
And we are trying to streamline the process. But we don't want as bad layers. But I really think that, that, that if they have a problem with the project, it should come at public hearing, like in a butter.
Yep.
And voice that. And then the, the applicant will look at that information.
Yep, as individuals.
They do.
That's, that's really where I think.
See the plans and the projects.
We're, we're not going to say they can't, they can't say anything, but I think that's, that's where.
The other piece that I think is important is that this board doesn't tend to be one. That throws ideas away because it didn't come from a place of authority. Someone has a good idea, the board hears the idea, they react to the. It doesn't matter if that idea came from an individual, an individual member of the Conservation Commission, or if the Conservation Commission as a body voted. If it's a good idea, it's a good idea. I've seen this board react to this all the time. So if someone on the Conservation Commission has a good idea, they can share that good idea anytime. It doesn't, you guys wouldn't ignore it because the entire commission didn't.
And it's like the egress of, the egress of the preserve going on prompt and metal. It will drastically affect those abudders. On prompt and metal within access road. They will change their life forever. So. That, that's, we really have to take into consideration.
However, they were all for understanding that people, they are.
And they were fine. And that's what I'm saying. And then when a developer reaches out to the neighbors, that's really what we want.
Yeah.
That's what we encourage. And we had both of them to say it tonight.
Anything else?
So next is the director's report.
All right. I'll be very quick because I think we're all. We all, this is your second meeting of the week. I appreciate your time.
No problem.
Uh, you guys, uh, you put in a lot of work. And, uh, I say that while at the same time I say I've got a little bit of homework for you. What you've got in front of you, in my opinion, are the, uh, elements of importance.
So David, you're gonna, you're gonna have a role in this eventually, I do.
Uh, not tonight, but, uh, here, let me make sure before you walk away. There you go. We made one for you too. Um. What we have, what you have in front of, as this, I've described some of the code work we're doing in the background. What's in front of you is code products. That, um, are shown that in my opinion handle very dry topic. This is not huge policy decision. A, a lot of this is cleanup work. Some of what's in front of you is mandated by the state and we're just cleaning our code up so that our code is consistent with the state. Uh, some of this is changing a few things to be a little bit more streamlined, but it's not huge policy decisions. It's a little bit of just code cleanup. Um, you guys have been talking about the bigger policy decisions with me. Which is the multi-family and then eventually you'll get a document that will express those changes to the use table. That we talked about at the last meeting. That I consider one of the bigger policy shifts, or I guess I could say a more thoughtful and critical thinking pieces. Uh, and then how we handle the testing structures, which isn't in here. This. I'm asking you to just give it a look. If there's something that jumps out as a concern, I'd like to hear about it. This is gonna be in that category where as I do a joint work session between you and the, and the council, I'm going to say, guys, some of this you don't have to take a deep dive on. Trust staff. This is in me. You don't have to take a deep dive and trust staff, but I don't want you guys to be at the first time. When we're all showing up in January. I want to give you an avenue and a venue to say, if you see something here that doesn't look quite right, where you have an idea. Email me individually. I'd love to hear about it and make this better if we can. That's all I have to say on that.
You're a teacher, you get booed, giving us homework back Christmas.
Believe it.
Alex, you're on board with this?
It was unfortunately complicit.
Yeah, and Alex should spend a lot of time helping to make sure this is clean. Uh, the, we do have a consultant that's helped us draft this stuff. Alex has spent more time than I have on this, making sure that all of this is clean. It's, it's logical. The, the, the code references are correct. He spent a lot of time thinking about this and, uh, there are still pieces that me and Alex are working through that we weren't ready to hand you yet. And even these, we still have a couple of minor questions on, but this is. Giving you guys just a quick. Reading assignment. If you, if you're getting tired or you can't sleep at night, don't worry. This is going to be great for you. Uh, if it doesn't make sense, that's not a big deal. I'm really just asking for your quick eyes on it. And if there's something that jumps out as wrong. Ask a question, give me a comment, send me an email anytime.
I'm still pulling out my phone, looking at definitions of words. Is there any way to define? I want to escape law stuff that you added versus what like Coventry.
Yeah.
What you put in.
Uh, there is. Um, the stuff on the top. The, the, it begins, the document on the top, uh, and these are several different documents. I probably gave you seven, seven or so different word. As you go from the top to the bottom, it goes from mandated date stuff, nothing you can do. And as you move through the documents, it becomes a little bit more. Uh, this is a choice that we're making. Um, and we think it's a good choice and we think it's a clean choice and it's not a huge thought provoking choice, but we think there's choices that you're making. The last document is actually one that I'm, you know, I'd be welcome to get your quick feedback on. We're removing an entire section of our code about leased land. This was meant to deal with a couple of specific scenarios like hill farm camp road. I'm probably saying that wrong.
No, no.
So. They had previously kind of tried to restrict these areas that they couldn't convert a seasonal house into a full house. That kind of work has been happening. Irregardless of this code. Um, I think the best move to make is just to remove it. Um, if someone has a housing unit today. Whether it's seasonal or not, the code doesn't differentiate. I think that people should have a right and an ability to, uh, increase their, their, their living units. We're living in an era where people need housing options. I didn't want that type of restriction. That's a little bit of a policy shift. Whether a hill camp road, if, if, if the zoning code should have its thumb on top of it, or if we should allow these people to move forward. And try to make improvements to their houses. My personal take is. The code treats a unit like a unit and I didn't want it to start treating these as separate, something else. That's my take. You guys might see otherwise and I'm, I'm open to your ideas. You can, you can, that. That's a little bit on the edge of not quite a policy decision, but enough for me to bring up. That's the last document.
And I think Hill Farm Camp Road eventually is going to be all privately owned anyway.
It is.
So they're getting rid of all the leases. In, in that. Specific one. And then there's what can't be all, it can't be your whole. Yeah. Then you had Rangers Point, but.
I mean, I like when they run a baby and add on, because then they get a septic instead of a septic.
Just going to say, yeah.
They get rid of the septic on the wall.
It's gonna be a big. You remember North River Flat years ago?
Yeah.
That was all these.
Yeah, right, it was. But it might be the same, it might be the same meaning as regardless.
Yeah.
It just sounds fancy, what I mean? I gotta look up these things. Did I say you're, you said irregardless and I was like.
Double negative. So now it means with regard.
One way or the other. And I didn't mean it that way.
It's the opposite.
Yeah, thank you. I often use correct words, but in the opposite way I mean them. Keeps everyone on their toes.
Yeah, word salad.
Yeah.
Go.
Thank you very much.
Right?
Motion to adjourn. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll give you one minute of my time on this.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
Merry Christmas.
All in favor?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Guys, thank you for the two meetings this week. I appreciate.
Oh, no problem.
You know, hey.
The thing gets worried a little, a little fuzzy up. We've been having some issues. And it was, it was just. I got home, took my boots off.
Then you probably had a better choice for yourself. You, you, you might have needed a break. You, you, you might have needed a break.